Okay. All right, so I don't have an annotated one for this, so bear with me here. I can do this. All right, I want to call to order the special meeting. It is six o'clock. And so let's do a quick roll call if we need.
Councilmember Bouders.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
And Mayor Pats.
Here.
And do I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion from Member Medina and a second from Member Bouders. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bouders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Any ex parte communications on this item?
On item 6.2, I've received emails from roughly a half dozen residents in the Emeryville community.
I think I've received an email from one person in Emeryville on that item.
I've received one email, but I think it was included as part of the record.
Same.
All right, and same here. Okay, and with that, let's move to the first item. Oh, public comment, sorry. For items not on the agenda? All right. Saying no public for items not on the agenda, move to public comment for items. Move to the first item, please.
Mayor Pats and members of the city council. The first item is a study session on 2019 state housing legislation. As I'm sure you know, the state passed a lot of laws last year, and many of them related to housing. We have identified eight of those laws that we believe are the most germane to Emeryville, but they are by no means, this is by no means, a comprehensive list of every law that was passed related to housing. I'll give a high-level overview of each of these laws and talk a little bit about their implications for Emeryville. And I would like to note that a number of staff members participated in preparation for this study session, and that includes economic development and housing manager Chad Smalley, housing coordinator Valerie Bernardo, senior planner Miro Desai, and associate planner Diana Kena, and they are all here somewhere, I believe. So they each have their own special expertise in these various areas, so if you have questions, I may call upon them to assist me in responding to your questions. So I'll go over each of these eight laws, as I said, at a fairly high level, and then entertain your questions, comments, and direction. So first, accessory dwelling units. The current regulations in the Emeryville municipal code specify that this is a by-right use, and it's subject to what we call zoning compliance review. They may only be done in conjunction with a single-unit residential use, and only one ADU is permitted per lot. Parking for the single unit is required, but for the ADU is not required. The ADU or the principal single unit must be owner-occupied, and the ADU and the principal single unit may not be sold separately. Unit size and dimensional standards are stipulated in the code and apply to ADUs. So there's been a number of changes. The various laws that amended the ADU laws have a number of changes to our current regulations. One is that owner occupancy may not be required. I just want to clarify that a little bit. In response to a question this afternoon from Councilmember Martinez, I did a little further research on this and found that this actually sunsets after five years. And also, this doesn't apply to so-called junior ADUs. Junior ADUs, in fact, must be owner-occupied under the new law. But normal, non-junior ADUs, we are not allowed to require owner occupancy for the next five years. We may not stipulate a minimum lot size. If you convert an existing structure to an ADU, then there's no setback requirements. For example, if you have a garage that sits on the property line. And for new structures, the setback can be no more than four feet. There are new size limits, which are generally larger than the current size limits. No replacement parking is required if an existing garage is converted to an ADU. We must allow tandem parking and parking in setbacks, and no parking is required within a half-mile of public transit, which really covers all of Emeryville for an ADU. This really is not a change for us, though, because we don't require parking now for ADUs anyway. As I said, junior ADUs, which are defined as up to 500 square feet within a house, are allowed in addition to an ADU. The non-living space in multi-unit residential uses may now be converted to ADUs up to 25% of the total units. So if you have a 100-unit apartment building and you have unused space in the building, you can convert up to 25 as ADU. You can convert that space into up to 25 ADUs out of 100, if you have a 100-unit building. Up to two detached, sorry, ADUs are allowed on lots with multi-unit residential uses. So apartment buildings could have up to two detached ADUs. And separate sale of the ADU and the single unit is allowed if it's built by a nonprofit for low-income households. Finally, the next housing element must include a plan to incentivize and promote affordable ADUs. So to implement this in Emeryville, we'll need to amend Article 14 of Chapter 5 of the Planning Regulations to incorporate the provisions of these new laws. We must include provisions in our next housing element, which is due in 2023, to incentivize and promote affordable ADUs, and that's it. Next law relates to low-barrier navigation centers. This is AB 101. A low-barrier navigation center is defined as "a housing-first, low-barrier, service-enriched shelter focusing on people, on moving people into permanent housing that provides temporary living facilities while case managers connect individuals to income, public benefits, health services, shelter, and housing." Low barrier means best practices to reduce barriers to entry, including presence of partners, pets, storage of possessions, and privacy. And housing first means the evidence-based model that uses housing as a tool rather than a reward for recovery and that centers on providing or connecting persons experiencing homelessness to permanent housing as quickly as possible. Furthermore, a low-barrier navigation center must provide supportive services to connect people to permanent housing, be linked to a coordinated entry system, enter their client data into the local homeless management information system, and comply with the housing-first model. These, under AB 101, are by-right uses in areas that are zoned for mixed-use and non-residential zones that permit multifamily uses. Design review may be required, but is not considered a project under SEQA. In other words, it doesn't trigger environmental review. To implement this in Emeryville, we will need to amend our planning regulations to add a use classification for low-barrier navigation centers, because we don't have that now in our code. And we would stipulate that this is a permitted use in these three zoning districts, which are mixed-use zones and that allow multi-unit residential, and design and decide whether or not we want to require design review for these centers. The AB 101 provisions will be repealed as of January 1st, 2027. So this is a seven-year bill. Next is the so-called super-density bonus law, which is AB 1763. The current state density bonus law allows a 35% residential density bonus for projects that provide at least 11% very-low-income units or at least 20% low-income units or at least 40% moderate-income units in a common-interest development. AB 1763 adds a new category to the state density bonus law, which is an 80% density bonus for projects that provide 100% affordable units, including at least 80% that are for lower-income households accepting a manager's unit. They may be up to 20% of the units may be moderate income. If it's within a half-mile of a major transit stop or high-quality transit corridor, which encompasses all of Emeryville, then there is no density limit, a height increase of three stories or 33 feet, and four incentives or concessions. And those could include things such as floor area ratio, unit mix, setbacks, open space, parking, and so forth. The implementation steps for Emeryville of this will be to amend Article 5 of Chapter 5 of the Planning Regulations to incorporate the provisions of the super-density bonus law. That article is where our current density bonus law provisions are found. I would like to note that, to date, all 100% affordable projects in Emeryville have either been sponsored by or had funding from the city. And assuming that that continues to be the case, the city would still retain some degree of control over the design of these projects. Next is the Surplus Lands Act, which is AB 1486. The Surplus Lands Act, or SLA, requires cities to offer surplus land for development of affordable housing. AB 1486 makes it explicit that the SLA applies to properties of former redevelopment agencies that are subject to a long-range property management plan. As you know, we have a long-range property management plan that includes 10 properties. It requires cities to negotiate in good faith with affordable housing developers with preference to developers that are proposing the greatest number of affordable units. And if two developers propose the same number of affordable units, then the preference would go to the developer that provides the deepest affordability. Cities are required to keep an inventory of their surplus land and report that to the State Housing and Community Development Department. And HCD then is required to maintain notices of available surplus land on its website. Penalties are prescribed for violations of the SLA and changes to the Surplus Land Act that may impact the disposition of two of the 10 properties that are in our long-range property management plan. Those include Bayfront, South Bayfront Site B, which is just north of Bay Street on Shellmount Street, next to the Powell Street Bridge, which is designated for mixed-use development, and the Shellmount Street Lot, which is that tiny vacant lot south of Temuscale Creek, across from West Elm, just south of the Marriott Hotel, which is designated for immediate sale. So both of these cases, we may need to offer these first two affordable housing developers. Next are two bills that affect the Fair Housing and Employment Act. These are the Source of Income SB 329 and Veteran or Military Status SB 222. The California Fair Employment and Housing Act, or FIA, prohibits housing discrimination based on various personal characteristics, which includes source of income. SB 329 adds Section 8 and Housing Choice Vouchers and Other Rental Subsidies to the definition of sources of income. And SB 222 adds veteran or military status to the list of protected classes and also federal HUD Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing, or VASH, vouchers to the definition of sources of income. Therefore, Section 8 and VASH voucher holders are now protected from housing discrimination under FIA. It's enforced by the California Department of Fair Employment and Housing, so no changes to city regulations are required. However, we will need to update our housing regulatory agreements to include Section 8 and VASH vouchers and people with veteran and military status as protected classes. And this information will all be posted on the city's website. Next is the so-called Tenant Protection Act of 2019, or statewide rent control, AB 1482. This actually addresses two issues. It adds provisions to the Civil Code to protect tenants both from unfair evictions and also to impose limits on rent increases. Concerning the unfair evictions, it prohibits evictions and non-renewals except for just cause. Just cause has two parts. It's defined as "at fault," which is non-payment of rent, criminal activity, trashing your unit, et cetera. And "no fault" is where the owner intends to occupy the unit, withdraw the unit from the market, or demolish the unit. For a no-fault eviction, the landlord must pay relocation fees or waive the rent. This does not apply to cities that have their own regulations that are stricter. For the rent control part of it, the rent increases are capped at 5% plus inflation per increase, and then there's an annual cap of 10%, and the rent may not be increased more than twice per year. This is retroactive to last March 15th, so if the rent has increased by more than 10% since then, it must be lowered to the current cap. This does not apply to single-family homes, condominiums, owner-occupied duplexes, below-market-rate units for lower-income households, or units that are less than 15 years old, and that's on a rolling basis. So every year, the units that are 15 years old would decrease by, you know, however old they were. A 16-year-old unit next year would be, a plot would be affected by this act, but a 15-year-old unit this year would not. There was a companion bill, AB 1110, that extends the notice from 60 days to 90 days for annual rent increases that exceed 10% for units that are exempt from AB 1482. So the 10% or more rent increase would not be prohibited, but the notice requirement would be extended. Staff has confirmed that our own residential landlord and tenant relations ordinance is more restrictive than AB 1482, so its eviction provisions do not apply to us. However, since we have no local rent control, AB 1482's rent increase protections do apply. And this is a 10-year law. Its provisions are repealed as of January 1st, 2030. And now the big one. This is the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, also known as SB 330. I will say this is a very complex law. We are still struggling to wrap our heads around it. We keep studying it to try to understand it. There are still some things about it that we need to understand better, I think. But anyway, in summary, this law seeks to address the state housing crisis and expedite permitting of new housing projects. It declares a five-year statewide housing emergency, which is until January 1st, 2025, when the law would sunset. It prohibits cities from modifying their general plan or zoning regulations to reduce allowable housing density below what it was two years ago, on January 1st, 2018. It also prohibits moratoria on housing development, which includes mixed-use development. And cities may not impose or enforce design standards established after January 1st of this year that are not objective. I will note that we may still enforce design standards that were established prior to January 1st of this year that may not be objective, such as some of our design guidelines. Those are still applicable. We just can't establish new ones. It sets up a two-step application process for housing developments, a preliminary application and an application. The preliminary application is the new piece of this. For the preliminary application, SB 330 spells out detailed submittal requirements that include the payment of the permit processing fee. So in addition to a laundry list of things that the applicant must submit, including plans and elevations and a lot of other information about the property, they must also pay the permit application fee at the time of the preliminary application. And the city may not ask for any additional information other than what is on the state's checklist in SB 330. When the city has determined that all of that information has been provided, then the preliminary, including payment of the fee, then the preliminary application is deemed submitted and also deemed complete. At that point, the development regulations are locked in to what was in effect when the preliminary application was deemed submitted. Fees may be increased if they are tied to an index, such as the Consumer Price Index, and that's how our master fee schedule increases occur every year, and also Construction Cost Index, which is our annual increases to the development impact fees. So those are still okay. But we can't adopt any new fees or increase existing fees that is not tied to an index. If the preliminary application meets all objective standards, that's things that can, that are measurable, and you can just check a box, yes or no, it meets this. In other words, no discretion or judgment is required to evaluate this. And those include things like parking, unit mix, floor area ratio, open space, and so forth. If the project meets all of those, then the city may not conduct more than five hearings on the project. And a hearing includes any public hearing, workshop, or any similar meetings before any city body or officer, including committees. It's very broadly defined. After the preliminary application has been deemed submitted, the applicant then has 180 days to submit the application itself. And that application is pretty much our normal application that we have today, and it is reviewed using the city's standard submittal checklist. There are a number of things on the city's checklist that are not on the SB 330 checklist. So we would, you know, review the application to make sure that all those additional things that we require are there. The city, then, this is not new. Under the Permit Streamlining Act, we've always had 30 days to review permits for completeness. And if we notify the applicant that their project is incomplete within 30 days, then they have 90 days to respond. And when all required items for the application have been submitted, then the application is determined to be complete. This is a slight nuance, a difference in nomenclature. The preliminary application is deemed complete, which is what the application used to be. And now the application is determined to be complete. Little bit of semantics there. And at that point, the city must make a determination as to whether the project is on a historic site. And that determination goes with the project throughout the life of its processing. The city can't change its mind later on, whether it's a historic site or not. The project would then be processed according to our normal existing procedures, except that only standards that were in effect when the preliminary application was deemed submitted are applicable. So if the council has adopted some newer, different standards since that time, they would not affect the project. If the project complies with the objective standards, then the city may hold no more than five hearings. And also, the time limits for approvals are shortened. For example, under current, or former law, I should say, if a project had an EIR, normally it, the city must approve the project within 120 days of certifying the EIR. That's now shortened to 90 days. And there are a number of other time limits that have been similarly shortened. However, the project loses its exemption from new standards if it is revised more than 20% in terms of unit, number of units or floor area, or if construction does not start within two and a half years after the planning entitlements are approved. Now I just want to take a minute to talk about this five-hearing limit and how it's going to affect us. What's on the screen here is just a, this is no particular project. This is a typical housing development project that we might normally have. Usually, we have a couple of Planning Commission study sessions and after, whoops. That was a spoiler. All right. We'd have, you know, review by committees often, BPAC, Parks and Rec Committee, Commission on Aging, might all want to look at the project, and then another Planning Commission study session. Normally, if an EIR is prepared on a project, we have a public hearing on the draft EIR to allow the public to make verbal comments in addition to written comments on the EIR, which I then responded to in the draft EIR. We typically have the Planning Commission certify the final EIR at a separate meeting before the project approval, so that they can get that piece out of the way and then come back a month or two later to actually consider the approval of the project itself. Then if the project is appealed, as you know, we have a two-step appeal process, both of which are considered hearings under SB 330. The first is where the city council considers the appeal, and you decide if you want to dismiss it or go forward with it. And if you want to go forward with it, then you set a date for the hearing on the appeal, and then you have the actual hearing on the appeal. So this is, in this example, this is 10 hearings under SB 330. So, again, just an example. If we want to cut this down, what I've shown here is actually eliminating six of them, so we're left with four. However, eliminating the two-step appeal process is going to require an amendment to the planning regulations. So if we don't make that amendment to the planning regulations, then we're back, then we're at five hearings here. If we do make that amendment to the planning regulations, we have four, so we have one to spare. Councilmember Medina?
Is number 10 supposed to be public hearing on appeal?
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, public hearing on appeal, that's right. Gosh, I proofread this like five times, but you know how it goes. So if we're at this point, and we do amend the code to eliminate the two-step appeal process, we now have one more hearing that we could put in here. So we have to think about, well, what do we want to do? Do we want to reinstate one of these committee reviews? Do we want to reinstate the EIR public hearing? I would note that neither SEQA nor city regulations require public hearings on EIRs. We've just always done it as a matter of practice to allow the public opportunity to make verbal comments. But we don't have to do that. We could say, you can only submit written comments. You can't make verbal comments. Also, we could combine the EIR certification with the Planning Commission approval and do that at a single meeting, rather than having, bifurcating that and having that at two separate meetings. But this is just to illustrate that a project that meets the objective standards under SB 330 will be limited to five hearings, and we have to decide, you know, this is kind of a tough decision, but we have to decide what those five hearings are going to be. And I think it's pretty clear that one has to be the Planning Commission approval, and if there's an appeal, one has to be the city council appeal hearing. And I'm sure we're going to want to have at least one Planning Commission study session, if not two or more. And so we don't have a lot of wiggle room to add additional hearings, but that's how it works.
Before you move on, can I ask the city attorney, does a study session rise the level of the hearing? Are they considered one in the same?
Yes, for purposes of SB 330, a study session would be considered one of the meetings that's allowed.
And the same applies to an appeal?
Yes.
As opposed to that being a separate process?
What SB 330 explicitly says is that legislative actions are exempt from the five-hearing limit. So if a project needs a general plan amendment or a rezoning, then those hearings don't count. But as far as I can tell, the EIR hearing does count. So.
Just to be clear, there's no distinction between a project proposing a duplex and one proposing 250 units?
Not that I can tell. It appears to, it applies to all housing development projects.
And then, so it seems to me it's the number of scheduled meetings that matter, not the number of boards or committees in attendance, correct? So if we have joint meetings between all of these entities and make it a very long study, a very long meeting?
That would be one.
We can work around that.
I would also note, though, that SB 330 explicitly says if you continue a hearing to a future date and have a second piece of it, that's two. That counts as two.
Learned recently, it's not impossible to say you have 24 hours within a 36-hour window to present. I think we can do that. Keep going, please.
All right. So some additional things about SB 330 concerning existing dwelling units. The city may not approve a project that demolishes existing residential units if the project does not replace them with an equal or greater number of units. We already have that in our code. And there are also special provisions for what are called protected units. And those are below-market-rate units for lower-income households, any unit that has been a BMR for a lower-income household within the past five years, any unit that's been subject to rent control within the past five years, occupied by lower-income households within the past five years, or withdrawn from rent or lease within the past 10 years. And cities may not approve a housing development that requires demolition of vacant or occupied protected units unless all protected units will be replaced and the replaced protected units are considered in determining the affordability levels of the units in the new project. The existing residents must be allowed to occupy the units until six months prior to the start of construction, and the developer must provide relocation benefits to residents and the right of first refusal to comparable units in new development, in the new development at an affordable rent. I would note that SB 330 applies only to housing development projects. And those are defined as projects that are residential units only. To Councilmember Bouders' point, it doesn't say how many units. Mixed-use developments where at least 2/3 of floor area is residential or transitional or supportive housing. So SB 330 does not apply to mixed-use projects if the project has more than 1/3 floor area that is non-residential. That's not considered a housing development project under SB 330. So finally, the implementation steps of this for Emeryville. I think first and foremost, we need to understand it all better. We need to develop a form and a checklist for the new preliminary application. I will note that SB 330 requires the state, I think it's HCD, to prepare such a checklist for us to use, but they don't have to do that until June 30th. So we're kind of six months here where we're on our own. So I think we need to do this. We need to review our planning regulations to identify any inconsistencies with SB, another typo, SB 330, not 300, and propose amendments, including elimination of the two-step appeal process. and propose amendments, including elimination of the two-step appeal process. And we need to develop objective standards. We kind of know what they are, but it would be helpful if we really had a clear, set, city council blessed list that said, these are our objective standards, including design guidelines. Some of them are fairly objective. We have just recently been awarded a $160,000 SB 2 planning grant from HCD to develop those objective standards. And we will be working on those over the next several months. And that concludes, whoops, one more thing. All this information will be posted, of course, on our website. That concludes the presentation on these eight laws. And at this point, I'd be happy to entertain your questions, comments, and direction, with a little help from my friends if necessary.
Okay, SB 330, I take it, went into effect January 1st? Would that affect anything about the 47th Street demolitions that are coming before us tonight?
We've reviewed that. We don't believe it does because that application was determined to be complete prior to January 1st. So SB 330 applies to projects that are either deemed submitted or determined complete after January 1st. And that project was submitted and determined complete before January 1st.
This would not affect our family-friendly guidelines, would it?
Yes, it very well could. Because those are, there is a degree of subjectivity. I mean, if it's objective, any person can look at it and say, yes, it meets it, or no, it doesn't, like a setback. Setback has to be at least five feet. Your setback is four feet. It doesn't comply. Anybody could evaluate that and check the box yes or no. The family-friendly design guidelines are a little more flexible, shall we say? They're subject to interpretation. And so if a project complied with the objective standards, wasn't subject... Well, wait a minute, let me back up there. We would not use that as one of the objective standards to determine whether or not the project complied with them, which would limit it to five hearings. But as I said, if it was adopted prior to January 1st of this year, yes, we can still implement subjective standards. So yes, I'm sorry, it could be subject to those still. But we can't adopt new guidelines that are like that. Any new guidelines have to be either yes or no.
Okay, I have one more question?
Please.
On the triangular piece of surplus land we have right at Temescal Creek along the bayfront. There's been a proposal to have that be the landing point for either a bridge or a tunnel to transit the freeway. Would a transportation use of that property be superseded by this new housing rules?
I believe it would. Chad, do you have any further information on that? Chad is our expert on the Surplus Lands Act. I believe the offering it to affordable housing developer trumps everything else. I think. Yes?
Just go with that.
Yes, okay, we'll go with that.
So Chad, we're good.
Chad, we answered it.
We answered it, we're good.
Thank you.
Other member questions? Who will we take? Member Martinez, Vice Mayor Martinez?
Regarding the Surplus Lands Act and its effect on South Bayfront Site B, you mentioned that we might need to offer it first to affordable housing developers. Does that mean that it would, it could only be housing? Is there any leverage that we have to use that land in addition to housing for economic development?
I believe it still has to comply with zoning. Is that right? Yes. So the zoning...
What's the current zoning for that?
The current zoning is MUR, mixed-use with residential. And that says on any site of more than one acre, which that is, it is supposed to be a mix of uses, one of which is residential.
Okay.
So there has to be some other use there as well. So unless the city council rezones the property, I believe it would still have to comply with that.
Okay. And then, as it pertains to SB 330, are there projects in the pipeline that currently could fall under its jurisdiction?
Well, I will tell you that the Anni project is actually more than 1/3 non-residential in its square footage. So it doesn't fall under SB 330. The 5850 Shell Mount Way project potentially could fall under SB 330, although it does not comply with our objective standard of parking. Because they're requesting more than the maximum. So I would argue it doesn't comply with that objective standard. So it wouldn't be limited to five hearings. But it still could be subject to the other provisions.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I know that you already sent some responses about AB 671 and incentives being required. I was wondering if we had gotten any additional information or if it looks like the state incentives would qualify as our incentives or if we have to separately incentivize ADUs? I'm really confused about that point.
Well, first of all, I don't have any further information beyond what was in the email that was sent to all the council members, I believe, I hope, this afternoon. And what's in that email is just a direct quote from the law. What it requires us to do is, in our next housing element, which is due in three years, to come up with a plan for incentivizing them. So as you probably know, the housing element gets a lot of vetting from the Housing Committee, the Planning Commission, the City Council, and a lot of public meetings. So during the course of that review, I would expect, you know, there will probably be some brainstorming about what our incentives could be. And the law requires the state to post a list of the incentives they have, I think, by June 30th of this year.
That's kind of my question. So the state's incentives do not count as the incentives? We have to have separate incentives?
Well, that's not clear.
Okay.
I mean, we might be able to just say, well, look, the state's got this stuff. That's our plan. I don't really know.
Okay.
Other questions? Member Bowders now? So let me take public comment really quickly and then we'll get to the direction portion.
All right.
And our comments, does any member of the public wish to comment on this update?
Well, yeah, there's a lot for the city of Emeryville to be excited about this because it takes away uncomfortable things that the city has traditionally not liked. And that is the public's insistence that we build more parks in our city like the general plan provides. As everybody here knows, and perhaps the viewing public might know, every project that brings, so there's some cutoff on housing project, some cutoff on the scale. Large projects have to build three acres of park land for every thousand new residents. And the city of Emeryville has been loath to enforce that, even though it's in our general plan. And matter of fact, the city has never enforced that in the 10 years we've had our general plan in existence. Developers don't like it, and so they don't want to do it. And the city staff and council, various iterations, the council have agreed that we don't want to make developers do something that they don't want to do, especially if it cuts into their profits. So it appears that this SB 330, maybe Charlie can correct me if I'm wrong, appears that the SB 330 takes you guys, lets you guys off the hook until we don't have to have somebody like me coming up and chastising you for not delivering the housing that the general plan guarantees. So you won't have to see me coming up before you and asking for more parkland. And so I guess, I'm sure you guys will appreciate that. Plus, there seems to be other stuff in there that you guys will similarly like. Anyway, okay, so good for you guys.
Please, come up and answer your question. And while you make your way up, we may not be able to answer it, but can direct you to someone who can. Thank you.
So my name is Jalil. I live on 47th Street. And I'm just wondering the difference between the new SB 330 and what's currently in existence in terms of protecting residents who happen to be low-income, living in houses that are in danger of being demolished? So what is the current, if this application was submitted so that it's not subject to these new rules, what are the current things protecting residents from this type of situation?
So again, as I said, we're not going to sort of respond. We just want to get feedback. And hopefully, we can maybe address that in the next portion.
Charlie can answer.
Charlie, do you like to answer?
It was actually part of the presentation.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I can just direct you to Valerie Bernardo, the young lady who's sitting at the end of the row there. She's our housing coordinator. She's our go-to person for those kinds of questions.
Perfect, thank you. All right, with that, we'll go to member comments. And none. Did you have anything, directions you needed from us?
Not particularly. I mean, I did highlight the actions that we think the city needs to take to implement each of these things. And if you have any additional thoughts or disagree with any of that, we'd like to know that. I will note that concerning ADUs, we have drafted an ordinance which we're bringing to the Planning Commission in February and I believe coming to the council in April. Right? That's the current plan.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll close out this item and staff ready for the next item.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. I'll be presenting on 47th Street Homes this evening. The applicant also has a brief presentation for you this evening as well. So this project is proposed for 1034 to 1042, 47th Street. That's shown here on the map, highlighted with a red margin around it. And here it is zoomed in a little bit. So for project background, this is originally applied for in July of 2018. The project's on part of a single, very large property consisting of two parcels. Original staff comments include the need for a survey for this to understand exactly what was going on with those parcels. And subsequently, a lot line adjustment application has been submitted to align the property lines with the project area that you'll be seeing tonight. That's all handled on staff-level review. This is just for context, for you to understand the project in full. So here's the existing property lines, and they're two different colors differentiate the parcels there. And the proposal is to shift the one to the south for this new project area in red, which aligns with the proposed project area.
Can you go back?
Yep. To which one would you like?
That one.
There you go.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question as we go along? Please. In the red, how many houses are in the red in that diagram?
I believe there's seven on the, in the arrow area, if you will, and four in the subject area.
Eleven total, right.
I believe so.
In the prior to the lot adjustment, there's 11.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
The applicant can verify that, but to my knowledge, there's seven. I don't know if one of those might be a duplex or something. So moving forward there. So the applicant held a community meeting on September 5th. About 20 community members attended. Member comments included concern regarding displacement of existing tenants, impacts of having more expensive units in the neighborhood, that the applicant is not required to provide affordable units, and that affordable housing impact fees are inadequate to address affordability and displacement. The comments also included concerns about potential for future development and impacts on the existing residents to the north, so the arrow area that you just saw, in the green area, insufficient maintenance of existing units, and questioning the need to demolish the existing units. Concern about potential hazards and construction impacts, potential to share used building materials with neighbors was proposed and well-received, and need for information to be provided in Spanish, and concerns regarding the meeting notification. And regarding this notification, this is notification area. It's a 300-foot area. Both staff and the applicant followed that up by double-checking to make sure that all, the entire area was properly notified. We found that to be correct. And follow-up to that, we also added a few names. If we don't have, if it's a rental unit, we don't have the owner-occupant's names. We disclosed to community members, so we added a few specific names to that list to make sure that people were aware it came directly to them. And also, for future notifications, instead of them being sent out in envelopes for community meetings, we'll have them sent on postcards so it's clear that it's what it is and people won't mistake it perhaps for like spam or, you know, bulk mails.
Excuse me, let me just elaborate on that briefly. The confusion arose for the community meeting notifications, which were sent by the applicant and not by the city. So people didn't recognize it as a notice about a meeting. For city notification, we have a bright yellow envelope, and it says on it, official notice of public meeting, and it has the city's return address on it. So that's how our notices will go out. And they're kind of hard to miss, I think.
Thank you for clarifying that, Charlie. So then there was the Planning Commission study session held on October 24th. So seven community members spoke there. The concerns raised there were very similar. Concerns regarding the rights of existing tenants, treatment of the tenants by the property owner, lack of investment and care to the property by the owner, impact of the proposed project on social and neighborhood cohesion, and questioning the need again to demolish existing buildings, and statements that if there had been ongoing maintenance, demolishing existing buildings would not be necessary. Concern about impacts on neighborhood affordability and the aesthetics of the project. There was also concern raised about potential impacts to cutting the trees on-site and what that would do to the local bird population. So the commission requested clarification of their scope and purview for this project. So their scope and, pardon me, their scope and purview is primarily to assess if the project conforms to the general plan and zoning. State law limits the ability of local jurisdictions to reject proposed housing projects. We heard a little bit about that tonight as well. And city tenant protection ordinance is not administered by the Planning Commission. There's an ordinance that's administered by the EDH for that. So Planning Commission comments. They requested more information on how the proposed project is environmental-friendly and energy-efficient. There was a mixed reactions to the aesthetics of the project and whether it fits into the context of the neighborhood. And potential for providing more private open spaces, particularly on the roof of the first floor for the second-floor units, was recommended. Planning Commission comments also were based on questions from the neighborhood. Flood zone information was requested. Staff has looked into that. There is no flood zone associated with Temescal Creek, which is behind, to the north of this project site. And it is in the Temescal Dam failure inundation area, but almost all of Emeryville is in that area, south of Powell Street. So that's not really unique to this project site. Feedback on site design was the Planning Commission appreciated the continuous curb on 47th Street with parking at the rear of the project. And they also appreciated the discards and closures are incorporated into the rear of the buildings and not detached. So for project overview, what are we talking about? Finally, got into this part of the presentation. So demolition of four existing single-unit residents to construct three duplexes for a total of six units, and providing seven off-street parking spaces, including six long-term bicycle parking spaces and two short-term bicycle parking spaces. So because the project is fewer than 10 units, it is not subject to unit mix requirements. All units do have two bedrooms, and the upstairs units also provide an additional office guest bedroom sort of thing. And not subject to family-friendly design guidelines. And affordable units are not required within the development, but affordable housing impact fees are required. So here's the existing buildings. And here's what's proposed. So for the site plans, you have existing over here on the left side of the screen and proposed on the right. You can see right now, there are four curb cuts. This is what Planning Commission was referring to, each for individual driveways. That's not allowed under the planning regulations. You need to have one driveway per site. So they're proposing that on the western side of the property. And then all of the garages would be accessed by the rear property. This would create more on-street parking by getting rid of those other three curb cuts. So here is the parking plan. It's a little bit hard to see the contrast on the screen, but the driveway is at the bottom of your screen here and wraps around the back of the buildings. And then there's two guest, or two parking spaces along the driveway, and then parking at the rear of each building. And that includes covered bicycle parking. And there's also bicycle parking for short-term temporary spaces at the front by the curb. Here is the landscape plan for that. So you can see there's lots of landscaping in the front in between the buildings. For open space, the common open spaces that are required are between each building. For open space, the common open spaces are required between each building, and then each unit has a large pork, porch, pardon me, or deck facing the street. And here's the elevation facing 47th Street, and you can see the deck on the second floor there, and the porch by the front doors on the first floor. So this is the west elevation, the driveway side of the project. Here we have the rear of the project, the rear elevation, so this is where all of the garages are. And here's the east elevation, so the side where there is not the driveway facing a residential unit. And here's a first, typical first-floor plan for each unit, you have the entrance at the front, common areas, and then two bedrooms off to the side with parking in the rear, and bike parking in the rear, and a discards room for trash, compost, and recycling that has been reviewed by Public Works for adequate sizing. And the second-floor plan, you have the roof deck that mentioned up here, the common living space, the two-bedroom is the guest, and there's stairs coming up from the rear on that. So some more renderings for you here, so this is overhead, looking down. And here we are, the street is in the background now, the driveway would be along the right side of your screen, and also along the backside of the property, you can see those garages there. So for the general plan, this is a medium-density residential, this is considered an area of stability, which is not anticipated to change significantly in character over the lifetime of the general plan. This designation does not preclude demolition, construction, or building modifications. For zoning, it's a medium-density residential, and there is no overlay district here, so the existing use is multi-unit residential, and the proposed use is also multi-resi, uh, let's try that again, multi-unit residential with an increase of two units. The multi-unit residential uses are conditionally permitted in the RM zone, so it does require conditional use permit, it requires Planning Commission recommendation, and then city council approval because of the demolition of the existing units. So for zoning analysis, this does not go over base-floor area ratio or density, and the building height, there is no bonus, the maximum height is 30 feet, and the proposed here is about 27. So bonus points regardless are not required in the RM district. So, we mentioned parking already, there's seven proposed vehicular spaces, and then for bicycle, there's one space for each unit and two short-term at the front. For required findings, conditional use permits, all conditional use permits require five findings that are consistent with the general plan and the location and size, the planning regulations that is compatible with water supply and other utilities, that its location will provide service or facility that will contribute to general well-being of the surrounding neighborhood, and the proposed use complies with all applicable standards. For the demolition, applicant will provide at least the same number of dwelling units as the demolished structure, that the replacement structure would feature design quality that is as high or higher than the structures to be demolished, and that is compatible with the characteristics of the neighborhood, and that the elimination of the residential structure would not be material detrimental to the housing needs or public interest. And then there's the design review findings, that is again, consistent with the general plan and design goals, and the design guidelines, and it's of high design quality. So staff reviewed this back in January of 2019 at our Development Coordination Committee meeting, and staff was generally supportive of design, and noted that the need for the applicant to comply with regulations regarding the relocation of tenants, that new curb, gutter, sidewalks, and street trees would be required, and that the city consulting arborist will need to peer review the arborist report and assess the existing street trees for a protection plan. So tonight, we're asking you to consider if you have any feedback regarding the design of the project overall, and if you feel that all the required findings could be made for this project. And that concludes my presentation tonight, and as I said, the applicant also has a brief presentation for you.
Do we have clarifying questions?
I do, can you go back one slide?
Yes.
Can you get into a little bit the regulations regarding the relocation of tenants and how that applies to our current tenant protection ordinance?
I am absolutely not an expert in that.
Can we get someone to do so? Because I think we have interested audience members.
Yeah, of course. So Valerie Bernardo is fortunately here this evening. Thank you, Valerie.
And I will note that Valerie and Navarre have been working closely together on this project because they have overlapping areas of expertise here.
Valerie Bernardo, Housing Coordinator here for the City of Emeryville. And so under our current tenant landlord ordinance, there is a requirement when there is a demolition where a unit's going to be removed from the market, that the landlord will have to provide two things to the tenant. The first one is they do have to provide relocation. Relocation payment is based off of one of two things, it's going to be based off of the number of units that the landlord currently has, so that would be deeming them either as a small or large landlord, and then it's going to also be looking at what the rental rate is of the current lease. Once we make the determination of what that rental rate is, and whether or not that is more or less than the fair-market value, then the current ordinance will determine whether or not they're going to get either one month of relocation payment, or they're going to receive, I believe it's up to four. The second thing that is required under the ordinance is that the tenants are provided with an option to return to the unit. They have to be, they have to provide to the landlord notification of where they will be during the time that the project is under construction. The landlord does have to give them the right to return to that unit at a comparable rate, which means that when they do come back, their lease terms need to be very similar to the lease terms they had prior to the renovation. And when we talk about comparable, that means that the rental rate would also need to be consistent to what it was prior to.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Member Vouters?
I almost lost my question, I think. When you talked about the, the calculation, oh my gosh, why did I, I lost my, I'm going to remember, I'll call you back, sorry.
Oh, smaller, large?
Yes, thank you. My question on the smaller, thank you very much, my question on the small versus large landlord is, for the purposes of the calculation in this case, will the landlord be considered a small landlord because this project is now deemed to be four units, or will they be considered a large landlord because they have other properties in Emeryville? What is the basis we calculate from?
It's my understanding that they're going to be deemed a large landlord, and it's based off the number of properties of which they have in Emeryville, not just related to this one case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other clarifying questions? Charlie, can you go back up there and bring up this slide, I'm sorry, Navarre, apologies, I'm one item behind. Can you go back to the lot lines for me real quick? So, am I seeing two or three lots? I'm seeing two, one red, one green.
Correct.
And we're moving the green line over to the middle of the red line.
Correct.
And parcel one and parcel two have the same owners.
Correct.
Correct. And there is no plan currently to remodel parcel two, because...
Parcel one, rather.
The green area?
The green, yes.
Correct.
Perfect. Okay.
So all of the floor-area ratio and density calculations and so forth are based on the area of the red parcel here.
Right. It's just interesting to me to move the lot line, it keeps the units under 10. So, that's, just wanted to clarify that I did my math right. Thank you. All right, and with that, it seems no more clarifying questions? I think we'll take public comment.
Oh, we've got the presentation.
Oh, presentation, sorry, thank you. I'm getting excited.
When you scroll, just use the arrow key, don't use the mouse.
Good evening, Mayor Patson, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, I'm Mark Forbes with Forbes Company. We are the proposed developer for the 47th Street project, I'd like to present to you this evening. My uncle has owned this property for probably 50 years, and we acquired it from my uncle and his estate in 2017, a little over two years ago. And so today, we're going to present the project to you. You'd like to present, Mark Rhodes with Rhodes Consulting.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening, and thank you for the time. Try to move as expeditiously as possible, I know we want to get to the public comment as well, and make sure we have time for all of your comments or questions. I'm glad that Mark started out with his family's history of ownership of the property, it's been many decades, and this is a difficult process so far, and because of the fact that we have tenants that are in some of these units right now. I do want to point out that there are a total of 14 dwelling units in this, in this slide shown with the stars, and then the four units that are under consideration now. Of those, of the remaining units, the 10 units with the stars on them, those are not being proposed for any kind of development, and I will note that all of those units are currently afford, they're all two-bedroom units, they're all currently affordable at either low-income or very-low-income equivalent rents, and that, and that's at about an average of $1,325 a month for a two-bedroom unit, and that of those 10 units, that the average tenancy there is 21 years. So the Forbes family has been a terrific steward of this property in providing affordable housing for Emeryville, and what we'd like to do now is propose six units where the four in the front of the lot are currently proposed. Two of the units have already been voluntarily vacated. One of the tenants has reached agreement, one of the remaining tenants has reached agreement with Mr. Forbes, and also has been offered that if one of the units on the other side of the property opens up prior to demolition, that she could have the first right of refusal of that unit. The last unit, where Mr. Forbes is currently in a, in a lease dispute with those tenants, and we won't go into the details of that here. So, why demolish? These units are, they're very, very old, and the systems that are in them are really not replaceable. So they're really units that would have to be gutted to rehabilitate them anyways, folks would not be able to live there during that time, and by removing them, we have the opportunity to put forth a much better site design than is there currently, and provide six units that are going to be somewhat affordable by design, and give you two more units than currently exist. And I will not go into a lot of detail around the context, staff's already done a terrific job of that. We believe that the units, the new structures that are proposed are very contextual with the neighborhood, they're not, they're clearly not the largest structures, nor are they the smallest structures, they've been designed with a very careful hand, and in a way that hopefully will not disturb the residents on the remainder portion of the project. And so what I'd like to do now is invite our architect up, Toby Long, to walk you through the design and his approach, but as staff already indicated, the project meets all of the city's development and zoning standards. So we're going to stand by, we're going to let Toby run you through, the design presentation will remain for any questions that you might have, and then we'll go back and sit down.
This is my slider, do you want to go over one?
You can start there if you want, it's up to you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for hearing us tonight. Again, I'll try to be expeditious, my name's Toby Long, I'm the architect working with Mark and his team. We've developed these projects in response to a lot of different conditions, I think Navarre did a great job in explaining some of the baseline considerations that we had, it sort of started at the level of the site, we love the idea of creating a project that's not garage-forward, and so parking at the rear of the property made a lot of sense. We've tried to develop an architecture here that really is compatible with the community, lining up with the front setbacks, providing some great landscaping for the front, new street trees, really recreating the street facade for the project. We're developing this project with a little bit of a modern language, trying to still reminisce on some traditional values, the roofline in particular, finding a nice composition of exterior materials that are long-lived, low-maintenance, that are green and environmentally sensitive, using stucco and some new board material, which is actually made out of rice husks, it's kind of a cool composite material coming out of Europe. The project is balanced kind of on all facades, as we can see here, we've sort of mixed the different floors and the materials, kind of complement each of the stories of the project. The rooflines create massing and break up the facade in both the front and rear. As Navarre laid out quickly, these are, these are two-unit buildings, we have really intended to create family-friendly layouts, with at the lower level being a slightly smaller configuration with two beds, one bath, you can see the stair at the rear through the common vestibule, which is accessing the second floor, slightly larger unit, we like the idea of having the additional office or guest space for some of the flexibility that the tenants may be looking for, as well as creating a nice outdoor space at the front of the property for even more kind of neighborhood flavor. Again, the parking issues were really instrumental in thinking through how we would treat the site, we've tried to position the buildings in such a way that they, again, really celebrate the front yard and move the cars to the rear. My work has been specialized over the last two decades in the prefab space, these are modular building projects, so we'll be constructing them largely off-site. This allows us to accelerate the construction schedule and minimize the disruption to the community, we'll be building the foundation at the same time we're building the house. The energy efficiency of the project is really important to not only our firm, but also the Mark's team, as well as now being baked into some of the new building codes that took effect in January. We are also proposing the building currently as all-electric, so the building won't use any gas, we'll have no gas piping in the structure, and as I mentioned, using high-quality, low-maintenance materials that really stand the test of time has been important to some of our considerations for the architecture.
Thanks, Mark. I won't go through the demolition findings, staff has done that effectively, we agree, we believe we meet those findings. Some Planning Commission study notes, again, a lot of concerns about the tenants and the upset in the community around the demolition. We are doing our best to stay in communication with the community and our residents and the neighbors, we've had various communications with them along the way, including reminding folks about the meeting tonight, there is a website up for the project, and then I will just leave it at that, and ask if you have any questions that we might answer. Yes?
The modular units that you mentioned, are those the ones created with union labor in Mare Island?
We haven't landed on the factory yet, so that'll be part of a bid process, and certainly Factory OS, which is up there, may be in consideration for sure. It's a little small for them, to be honest, they're trying to work on larger multi-tenant projects, but we're certainly interested if we can get them to be committed.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Member Vouters?
I have a few questions. My first question is about the condition of the units that you're proposing to remove. You said that the, the systems in the homes were old and outdated, and you'd have to gut the units to replace them. What caused them to fall into such disrepair?
The units weren't, these, these units were not high-quality units when they were originally constructed, they've actually long outlived their mostly useful life, electrical systems, heating, et cetera. Mr. Forbes has actually, I believe he, he's actively been working on those units since they took the property from the uncle's estate, but they're, they're just not in good enough shape to put the rehabilitation time and money into. After a fair amount of study by Mr. Forbes' group before he decided to put the development application together.
So did that study get presented to the council to review so we can take a look? As a former planning commissioner, I've, and having family members who live in 100-plus-year-old homes, I'm just curious what, what those systems were and what the deficiencies were, I didn't see anything about it.
We haven't submitted, I don't, I'm not sure that a formal study was done beyond spending a lot of time with architects and contractors to understand what those costs would start to look like.
Okay, that's my first question. My second question was what necessitated the need to move the lot line?
Well, in the first place, the lot line goes through the front porches of the, of the homes that are up facing the 48th Street side, so they're, they're running through buildings, and we all know that building officials don't like that condition. But the other was to place all of the units that would be under the consideration of the development project onto one lot, so that the balance of the units, there wouldn't be upset caused by folks who thought that, that the redevelopment might be moving into the, the larger piece of property.
But the lot line going through the porch or the front of any other home wouldn't preclude you from seeking demolition of one of those properties on, on any given property wouldn't have, or house on the property wouldn't have been precluded by the fact that the lot line cut through a house?
No, they don't cut, the lot line doesn't cut through the houses that are under consideration right now.
Right, but my point is, you did not need to move a lot line to do what you're doing.
No, not necessarily.
Right.
It was, part of it too, was to put the new, the new development will be on one parcel for financing purposes, the exist, the rest of the existing homes would stay on that lot for financing purposes.
I understand now. And you've, because you're exempt from the unit mix and family-friendly guidelines, you've just chosen not to apply those, is that correct?
I think actually the project conforms with the family-friendly guidelines.
I looked at it and it doesn't, I'm a planning commissioner by trade, so...
Okay, that's fair.
Does the front, the front door will... Does the front, the front door walks right into the living room, that's the very first thing you know doesn't comply with.
Okay. We, we think that perhaps despite some of those standards, they're very family-friendly with two and three-bedroom units, with the bathroom configurations, with direct access to the garage, and actually front doors and living spaces that address the street. So the lower units in particular, you can enter the front door directly from the street. And the upstairs units have a living room and a balcony that do look directly over the street as well, from an urban design perspective.
Okay, I have no more questions right now.
Member Donnie, you?
Uh, no.
So I have, several of mine have been answered, but I wanna, what is the actual age of the current homes?
I would probably venture to say probably.
Can you talk into the mic, I'm sorry?
I'd guess it may be eighty years.
So nineteen forty?
They're probably, they're probably older than that.
That's probably true.
Yeah.
Probably a hundred years old.
Probably, that's, that's what I was thinking, is they're, yeah. They, yeah, nineteen twenties, the beginning of the disposable era. Things were not built to last then. What is the construction of the current homes, since you've inspected them? Is this redwood timber inside there, or is this, you know, cheap plywood, very modern plastic stuff?
The framing is, is most likely redwood.
Redwood siding, right, correct.
Oh, yeah.
Probably framing.
Very, very much disposable stuff. Okay, I think that clarifies that for me. From there, we'll go to public comment.
Can I ask one more question?
Please.
Real quick. The other lot that's going to, if the lot line is moved and there's two separate lots, do you have an intention of developing the adjacent lot?
Not right now, no.
Okay.
That wasn't a no. So is there a timeline on when you plan to develop them?
There, there's no plans right now. We're not considering doing that right now. I mean, I, I can't say for ten years out, but for right now, there's no plans to develop the north side.
And one other thing, on the slideshow, you said that the current units were affordable. Do they have an affordability covenant on them, or they simply have a rent that you classify as affordable? And is that based on the current market rate for housing?
That's just been the tradition for forty, fifty years.
What percentage of market rate are they?
The six, let me, let me take that. They're not protected by regulatory agreement. Six of those remaining ten units are affordable at fifty percent AMI, under the AMI rules for Alameda County. The other four, very low.
No.
Fifty percent AMI is very low income, under the state standard. Low income is eighty percent. That's what the other four units are.
They're below, everything's below eighty percent?
Six of the units are in the, in the fifty percent range, four are in the eighty percent range.
Okay, thank you.
I think you had it on a slide, didn't you?
Yeah, I did have it on the slide.
You had something on here, the low income?
Yeah, and, and we've double-checked those. I, I'm a, I deal with state density bonus all the time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ah, there we go.
There you go. So then you can see the, the family income that those are associated with as well because they're two-bedroom units.
That's what I was looking for, we were just going faster with slides. Thank you.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
Please.
I just have one last question to follow up. You made a statement, I'm gonna quote you, I just wanted you to explain what it means. When you talked about the, the three proposed duplexes, your statement was, quote, "somewhat affordable by design," end quote. Can you elaborate what that means?
Yeah, let me, give me a second. They're going to, these units are, well, they're multifamily, they're not single-family homes, so they're apartment units as duplexes, so they don't generate the same kind of potential income as, as a standalone, single-family home. And that's, that's really where their affordability lies. And if the modular construction, if money can be saved, construction's really expensive right now. Stick-frame construction such as this, if they weren't going to be modulars, running about three hundred dollars a square foot right now in the Bay Area. Those are the quotes that we're getting on projects in the East Bay. For podium-based projects, it's, it's up over four hundred dollars a square foot. So if, if Mark can save money on the construction with modular units and with time to market, he might be able to hold those rents down at, at slightly lower than market rates.
So what I heard you say to open was that because it's not a straight-up, single-family home, it'll be cheaper?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and take your seats, we'll, so we'll now take public comment. I have a fair number of speaker cards. When I've worked my way through them, you can either turn in a speaker card if you'd like to be added to the list, or if you don't want to do a speaker card, just, just wait until the end, I will have, you will have some time. I want to apologize in advance if I butcher your name. I'm sorry? Nope. And so I'm just gonna take these in the order in which I receive them, and we'll go first. Oh, and since I have several, I'll call two or three people at a time. If you'll just line up behind, it'll make this go quicker.
You ask them to speak into the mic.
Oh, yes, and please be sure to speak into the microphone.
It moves.
It moves, yes. Miriam Jacobs, if you'll come up, you're our first speaker. Mark Rhodes, you're second, followed by Toby Long.
Hi, I have a couple points. One is I live across the street from the proposed project, and one issue I have is the parking. Like, how many of you live in a household with more than one adult? And how many of you have more than one car? So if you have more than one car, you know, right now, the existing houses have driveways that two par, two cars can get parked in. I don't know if anyone wants to even go around the back to park their cars. And yeah, there's more parking spaces, but real, in reality, there's gonna be less parking for the block, which is already overloaded. There's, you know, there's no place to park, and there's other units on that block which are empty. So that's, that's one of my points. And the other is, is just, is, is affordable housing. I know that there's plans for other buildings in Emeryville, but are they existing yet? And if you look at the bakery street buildings, how much are those are, are market? In downtown Oakland, there's a ton of them that are, are market value that are vacant. And, you know, yeah, they're less than, say, a one-family house, but not everyone's gonna want to live in a, an apartment as opposed to one, a one-unit house. So those are, those are the points I'd like to make.
Thank you.
The next three speakers might be the project team, Mark Rhodes, Toby Long, and Mark Forbes.
Great, thank you. All right. I'm sorry? Jaleel Griffin-Stout? Followed by...
Mirta.
Oh, Mirta, see. Hi.
Hi. So I also live on Forty-seventh Street, exactly across from this proposed project. Not only do I find the design to be extremely unattractive compared to my current view, especially if they're gonna remove that large tree, which is one of the best things that I have to look at from my living room window, where I also run my childcare business. So I spend all day in looking at that view and at those houses, which are charming as they are. And I don't think that they were built in a low-quality way. My ex-husband lived in one of those units, and I saw never in the past fifteen years anyone come over and try to repair any of the systems, electric or otherwise, other than my ex-husband and his housemates would sometimes paint or repair the stairs or replace broken windows. So I don't think that everything that's being said about the maintenance, or even how dire the need for demolition is, is actually honest. Not to mention, my very good friends are being pushed out by this project. I heard it said that an agreement has already been made, which is also false. And I would really urge you not to approve this project. It's great as it is, and I wish that you would just fix the existing buildings. They're charming, very sweet little buildings.
Thank you. So, Mirta?
I don't, I can't read it, sorry.
Yeah, I can't either. Just Phil's, am I?
It's me.
Can you say your name for me, and I want to apologize again? And I'm gonna go with penmanship on this. It's so fancy and formal. It's fancy and formal, and I'm, I'm used to reading kids.
My name is Mirta Fizemee.
Yep, okay.
Mirta Fizemee.
Great, thank you, welcome.
Good afternoon, good evening. I am one of the tenant, the last standing one. Those homes are beautiful. I'm biased, because I've been living there for about twenty years. They are redwood, nineteen twenties. I fell in love with them, that's why I moved there. Unfortunately, I'm gonna have to move because of the fact that I don't own it. I didn't inherit. I didn't have the opportunity of having the approval of purchasing because of the fact, that's what was said to me when there would be, I have asked often, when, can I buy? Can, oh, if, if we're going to sell, we'll let you know, you'll be the first person to know. I never had the opportunity of that, so it was sold within the family and understood, you know? That's what happened. And at this time and point, I'm gonna have to move. I am a grandparent with two kids, and we just have to be relocated. And the part that is really sad, the home, the place that I have lived for the twenty years, every two years, I submit what need to be done. And if it's not being taken care by the landlord, I hired someone and I get reimbursed. They've been very cordial of that, because I always have a great communication with the landlord. But this time, it was really a shock, after I put hardwood floors and everything, and suddenly, six months later, I'm being offered to move with a promise of a certain amount, and then rescinded, and then... Now, I'm, I'm hearing that everything is set up that I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just very emotional about this, because I like my neighborhood. I have tremendous, I mean, tremendous amount of friends, and I have to move. I don't know where yet, but I have to move. And there is nothing wrong with my house.
Mr. Mayor, through the mayor, may I ask a question of the public speaker?
Please.
Thank you for being here today. I have just a couple of quick questions for you, and out of courtesy to the other public speakers, if you could keep your answers short, so we don't have issues with making sure everyone gets fair time, I have just a couple of questions. My first is, what are the major maintenance issues? There was a discussion by the applicant saying that the, the homes are in disrepair and need all this work. What has been the major problems with your home in the past twenty years?
Is it care? Meaning, coming in and putting floors down, meaning removing old carpets?
Has the electric always worked?
Electric always worked?
Has the heat always worked?
Uh, we didn't have heat for a while because of the fact that they didn't upgrade, so we didn't have heat for about seven years.
And that's when you first moved in?
Uh, no. They removed it because they were going to replace it, and along the way, there was miscommunication and no one came in. I was not there that much, I never really followed through. And so finally, I said, you know, we don't have heat, so you have to really bring heat in. So about two years ago.
Does the water system?
Raised my.
When they raised your rent, does the water system work?
Water system is fine.
And has the sewer always worked?
Always worked.
Thank you, I have no more questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You.
That all?
Thank you, yes. Jonathan Singh? And Dana Westmoreland, you're on deck.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Jonathan Singh. I, I live in Emeryville. I'm also a renter. So to me, to hear the, the concerns of, of tenants like this, I, I also signed up to speak at, on another item. So to me, to hear the concerns of tenants like this, I think it's, I think it's very proper that we ought to give them a voice, that we ought to be listening to, to their concerns. I think there's a way to do this, to do this project where we still listen, listen to them and make sure that, that they have the right to return, that they receive the amount of compensation that they're legally entitled to under our city regulations. As a, as a renter, I've, I've definitely faced problems with finding housing that's affordable even to me, who, who makes a, who works for the Oakland City government and, and makes a, you know, a middle-income salary. So to me, I, I am still in support of this project for the simple fact that it's a, it's a net increase to homes in Emeryville. We're talking about six housing units instead of the four that currently occupy that land. So for that reason, I'm very much in support of, of the project. But I do think that our government should work, work hard to protect the interests and the rights of the tenants who live there, especially in, in providing compensation and the right to, to return at the, at the same rate when, when the project is completed. Thank you.
Hey, Dana.
Hi, my name is Dana Westmoreland. You have a letter in the staff report from me, correct? I hope everybody read it. And then I was at the planning thing, and I guess I have to be here too. This is a really bad idea, you guys, it's a super bad idea. You can disregard the eviction of the tenants and the neglecting of the property and, you know, I'm not even quite sure it's legal to move these people's backyard sizes, once you have a big backyard, to make it smaller, vice versa. I don't think that's legal for a renter. But you can, you can't deny what it's doing to our block. I'm gonna, I've, I already miss the guys who live there. I can't imagine not saying hello to Mimi and her kids every morning when I come back from the dog park. Every, I mean, we have a little tiny world, and we have a microcosm of trees, and those trees are magnificent. They're right there, I live twenty-five feet away from this line. So those cars that are turning that ninety-degree turn, which nobody's gonna do when they come home and they're tired, they're gonna park in the, any available spot. Nobody's gonna take that sharp curve into their one garage that, in the apartment where they live with three other people and they have two other cars. So, I mean, right now, I mean, there's no place to park as it is. There's two houses that burned, one that's been vacant for seven years, the whole time I've lived there. And then these, two of these four houses are vacant, and there's still no parking. And people are parking in the yards and in the driveways of the vacant houses. So that's how bad it is. And my friends have no place to park when they come over. And the truth is, most of my friends ride bikes, and they can't even ride their bike down my street, because there's cars in the bike lane on our street. I mean, it, I mean, it's just wrong. Let's see, what else do I got? These houses are gorgeous. I mean, there's something beautiful and spiritual about an old house. But there's nothing beautiful or attractive about an old prefab apartment building. And we've already got two of those on our street. These houses are the anchor. They're the big houses with the big yards, and that's what everybody sees is what's nice on our street. And every house that age needs work. I moved into my house, it's a nineteen fifteen, little tiny craftsman built back in the day. Yeah, it needs work, but it's a solid little house. And tearing these houses down is a violent injustice. That and those trees, it's just, it's just an injustice to this, to our block. And that block is very short, and it's a very tight little community. You can only go one way, you have to drive, you know, you can only get in and out one way pretty much unless you go around, you know? So we see each other a lot more than the average, like, longer block. And so the fact that the guys moved away and I don't have anybody to hang out with on Saturday and pull weeds in the devil strip, which is what we used to do, saying goodbye to Mimi is just, that's gonna be the worst. So no matter what anybody tells you, that design does not fit with the neighborhood. So I'm just asking you, please just don't put your big stamp of approval on this. There's more to it. And if you're not changing it, you're choosing it, so, thanks. And if you're not changing it, you're choosing it, so, thanks.
Anybody else from the public like to speak? That was my last speaker card.
Okay. This project is materially detrimental to the housing needs of the city of Emeryville. Your staff has determined the exact opposite. But it's materially detrimental to the housing needs because what we need is affordable housing, family-friendly housing. And what we have, I mean, it's absurd to the point of absurdity. We have, right now, it's affordable because it's old housing stock. And it's, families are living in it right now. And, uh, and it's gonna be torn down and it's gonna be unaffordable. So I don't see how your staff can say that it's not materially detrimental to the housing needs. It's exactly materially detrimental to the housing needs. Now on to Mr. Forbes, the owner. Could you put this on the screen, please? Okay, so, Mr. Forbes, we found out from the last meeting of the planning commission, offered these families $5,000 to leave the premises, which is a pittance, $5,000 is nothing. Two families were desperate enough to take the money and two didn't. And to the two families that didn't, we were, it was reported at the planning commission meeting, Mr. Forbes jacked the rent up by 95% on those families. So this is a, and then he's, now he's saying that these houses have to be demolished because they're in a bad state of repair. I'm a building contractor, I do this for a living, I've done it for 38 years, that's a scam. This is a classic slumlord ploy. He hasn't maintained these houses and now he's using the fact that he's been a slumlord to justify tearing them down, evicting, you know, low-income families of color from Emeryville and then to build this new project increases profits. It's classic slumlord ploy. I mean, if we get in bed with this guy, I mean, it's really gonna be to our, you know, perpetual detriment. So, you know, I don't see how you can approve this. I mean, it just runs counter to everything we're trying to do in Emeryville. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Thank you, okay. Discussion, I don't think we have any questions before us, but Mayor Bowers, you look ready to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's been one thing that was overlooked in the presentation this evening. But to me is actually the most critical part of the evaluation we're making this evening. I'm gonna turn to the criteria. The applicant just skipped over the findings required for demolition of residential units. To me, that's the most germane thing to discuss, is what are the requirements to demolish an existing residential unit? And there are three. And I am gonna give the applicant the benefit of the doubt on the first two. The first is that it will provide at least the same number of dwelling units as those demolished. And that is true. The second is that the replacement structure would have design quality that is high, as high or higher than the structure to be demolished and is compatible with the neighborhood. And that's subject to the eye of the beholder, but I will give that to the developer as well as plausibly true. But there was no discussion about the third element and I have been taking some notes. The third is that the elimination of the residential structure would not be materially detrimental to the housing needs or the public interest of the affected neighborhood or the city. So here's the notes that I have that lead me to question whether this particular application should be granted a discretionary permission to demolish these units. I don't believe the owner has taken a serious interest in these structures. The owner didn't know what year the houses he's proposing to demolish were even built. The owner can't demonstrate and did not demonstrate what the needs were. There were some statements about systems, but we heard from a person who's lived in one of those houses for over 20 years that the most that she's encountered as a system that was broken down was the lack of heating apparatus, which, by the way, is against the law if you're a landlord, in her home for seven years, which arguably would come back to landlord neglect, which I understand is not this landlord, but his uncle perhaps. And they moved a lot line, and I don't think that was a mistake. I think the lot line was moved to avoid the affordability requirements of our planning regulations. Because if the existing lot line had stayed in place, they would be required to build affordable units in this project. But by moving it to four units, they escaped that obligation. And so they don't have to do family-friendly design guidelines, they don't have to do affordability. And so to me, this is not about tearing, there's not a sincere, on its face, effort to articulate a reason why these homes need to be demolished. We are just being asked to believe that the homes are in disrepair. I have not seen any evidence that they need to be in disrepair. And so, Mr. Mayor, at this time, I cannot make the findings and I'm not even gonna move to design criteria because I don't think we reached that question.
Thank you. Go ahead, Member Medina.
I had the exact same section written down from this finding. Section C, materially detrimental. I agree that in this case, it seems that demolishing a house that has a 20-year resident in it without any pressing need to do so does seem materially detrimental. For full disclosure, I lived across from this house for six years. And I lived in a house that I believe was built in 1918. Miriam, you can nod with me around then. All the houses on the street were built around that time period. And my electricity always worked fine, I had extremely old heating system that worked fine. I had a landlord who was frankly very responsive and lived in the unit and took care of it. And it was a great unit and I miss it, honestly. I think that you can have an excellent old unit. I'm not in favor of always preserving houses just for the sake of saving them. But adding two units in the Bay Area doesn't outweigh the negative impacts and it would be materially detrimental, in my opinion.
Member Donahue?
I'd like to hear from...
Member Martinez?
I just wanna agree with my colleagues. I live in a home that was built in 1905. And I learned a lot about the redwood timber that holds it up. And if it had redwood siding, that would make it all the more valuable. I value my neighbors. I value housing. I value, I'm grateful for the previous study session where we learned about all of the measures that our state is moving forward with to take action on our housing crisis. But I agree with my colleagues that adding two units is not gonna help in this situation when we're losing families and valuable members of our community.
I have a question for our city attorney. We obviously don't want to lose members of our community. Is this, by meeting the guidelines, opening up us to a lawsuit for doing a taking on property if we deny the rights for demolition?
Well, so, the council, in order to demolish the units, the council has to be able to make the findings that are described in the ordinance, including the subsection C, which the other members had articulated tonight. And those findings have to be supported by substantial evidence in the record. In addition, the, you know, any permit would have to be, would also have to comply with any other requirements in our code as well as state law. So if the council is able to articulate the findings and those findings are supported by substantial evidence in the record, then, you know, are, we have, you know, then our case is better. We have a better administrative record to support the actions of the council.
Okay. It's a little bit of risk here for us. You don't think so, okay.
I think if we make narrowly tailored findings that substantiated by what has been said, and I believe my comments outline that the record is deficient. And if the majority of council believe that we do not have a record before us that necessitates demolition, we can go back with direction and say we do not have sufficient basis to make those findings.
Before we get there, I wanna let Member Donahue finish. That was at the end of your comments?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so I have a couple of things and I think I will look for a motion. I wanna talk a little bit, I am old. I'm not quite as old as these houses, but I'm old. And so I wanna start with civility. I would ask that when we come up here, name-calling and memes, as amusing as they are, don't add to that on one side. And on the other side, I think if you come up here with a plan and you're gonna articulate things that we need to make findings on, being honest and straightforward with us. I heard talk of affordability, but it's not in writing. There is no sort of plan of, hey, we're gonna keep these affordable. It's, we're gonna charge market rate and they're not super fancy, so they'll be a little bit cheaper. That's not affordability. And if it's not on paper, I don't buy it. We heard about maintenance, I think others have addressed that quite well. You know, don't tell me these houses weren't built to last. That's just an insult to everybody in the room. You know, don't say you have agreements in place with all of the people when people have moved out, you know, and on that point, don't tell me it's addressing the housing shortage when we have perfectly fine units sitting empty. That is part of why we have a housing shortage. You know, and don't argue with a council member over family-friendly or other issues when it is pretty much, those are the yes or no questions on there. That also doesn't help with civility, as far as I am concerned. I am wholeheartedly agree, there is no way we can make these findings. You know, I don't, I think we could actually look deeper. I suspect there are more bedrooms currently in the four units than there will be in the six. You know, I live in a house built in this time. What is and what is not a bedroom, what is and what is not usable square footage. You know, it's not always as it appears on the record. So for that reason, I'm looking for a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is a study session and we do not have to make a motion, is that correct, staff?
Correct.
And so I would just recommend that the thing we leave the staff with is that a majority of this council finds that the record lacks substantial evidence to meet the findings required to propose demolition of the properties as the applicant has put forward.
I concur with that wholeheartedly.
Correct.
Do we have a majority?
Yes.
Yes, perfect. And with that, we move on to the next item.
I think that might be it for this agenda. We might be adjourning.
Oh, is this the end of the agenda, sorry. So with that, we are adjourned. Do people need a break or do you wanna just go right to the next one? Okay, so this is now the successor agency, I call that meeting to order. I think we can skip roll call, everybody is still present.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
So I have a motion from Member Bowers, a second from Vice Mayor Martinez. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, for items on the agenda or for the consent, please let me know if we have anybody who wants to... Wow. Sorry, ex parte communications and then public comment.
I have one, Mr. Mayor. I communicated with the chief of staff for Supervisor Keith Carson regarding the agenda for the Oversight Board.
Great. And now we're on to, any other ex parte? No. Public comment on this agenda or items that fit on this? Seeing none. Do I have a motion for the consent?
To move, second.
Great, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Martinez and a second from Member Medina. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, that brings us to the action item, 7.1.
Move to a wave presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion to wave presentation, a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Sorry.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to reiterate, this is the adoption of the recognized obligation payment schedule for the 2021 year. We are going to the county Oversight Board tomorrow. With this action, we will report back to the council of the Oversight Board's action tomorrow afternoon. Thank you.
Perfect. Public comment on this item? Okay, any discussion? Okay, I just wanna say, we skipped over presentation because staff did an amazing job putting this together, keeping us in the loop. Thank you for that, and with that, I'll entertain a motion.
All, so moved.
I'll second. So I have a, I have a motion from Member Medina, second by Member Bowers.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Medina motion. Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. And with that, we are adjourned. Do people need a break or should we go right into... I'm ready, but I'm not the only one up here, so. But you get one vote, anybody else break or go?
Go ahead.
Go.
Let's do this.
All right. It is 7:46, I call to order the city council meeting. And we can skip roll call, we're all still here. I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
I move we approve the final agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Member Donahue, a second from Member Medina.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. All right, we'll slow down a little bit now. So, we just have a quick proclamation, January is National Blood Donors Month. They're not here to, are you putting it up?
There's no, no...
Oh, perfect.
On here to...
There we go.
Just gonna put up some information.
They die because there was no blood.
And so again, since it's National Blood Donors Month, I am gonna skip, the reading of the proclamation is available online, correct? Would you like, no, then I will read it, sorry, trying to go too fast. Whereas almost exactly 50 years ago, on December 31st, 1969, the President of the United States signed a proclamation designating January as National Blood Donor Month. A new monthly observance meant to honor voluntary blood donors and to encourage more people to give blood. And whereas the timing of the proclamation was not a coincidence since the month of January is usually a critical period of blood shortages as people stop donating blood during the holidays and when they get sick during cold and flu season and bad weather can also be a factor during the winter months. And whereas each pint of blood can save three lives and in the United States, more than 34,000 units must be collected each day and one in seven patients entering the hospital will have a need for blood. And whereas every two seconds, someone in the US needs a blood transfusion and the treatment of a single car accident victim may require as many as 100 pints of blood. And whereas the blood used in an emergency must be collected prior to an event occurring, thus blood donations are needed more than ever after large-scale emergencies, especially since blood cannot be artificially made and can only come from generous donors. And whereas millions of people donate blood each year, but only an estimated 38% of the US population is eligible to donate blood at any given time. And those who are eligible, only 1 in 10 actually donate. Now therefore be resolved that on behalf of the city of Emeryville, the people of the city of Emeryville and on this, the 50th year anniversary, the mayor does hereby proclaim January 2020 as National Blood Donors Month in the city of Emeryville to increase public understanding of the importance of blood donation and urge the people in our community to donate towards the life-saving cause. Proclaimed this the 21st day of January 2020 by the mayor of the city of Emeryville.
Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, may I make a statement?
You may.
I just, I appreciate the mayor's recognition of National Blood Donor Month and since we're on the topic of awareness, I would just like to raise awareness on two things. One, people who are from or travel to countries, a list of countries, including many in Africa and south of the equator in Central America, are prohibited for as many as 10 years to life from donating. And as a former relief worker in Africa, I find that discriminatory as many of us who've worked there know that the people who we saw, we come back with some of the most personal knowledge of the need to donate and yet we're precluded from doing so. And secondly, although there have been some changes, if you are a homosexual male and you have intercourse with other men, you're precluded by law from donating for a period of 12 months. We have so much modern technology that tests blood and tests donors. You can be tested for HIV in the course of five minutes now in a doctor's office. And so these prohibitions remain discriminatory and I just wanted to raise awareness to that point, too.
Great, thank you. Okay. Any special announcements, I'm sorry, committee vacancies?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a recruitment period open again now. We continue to have these vacancies trickling in. Applications are due to our office. to have these vacancies trickling in. Applications are due to our office by February 10th. All the information is available on the website, and you will be making appointments, hopefully, at your March 3 meeting. Of note is the pending vacancy on the Planning Commission of Linda Barrera. So there'll be a Planning Commission term ending 2022 that we'll hope to fill. Thank you.
Any council members, any special reports or announcements? Oh, it's unusual.
I'll just slow them up.
Yeah, well, the holidays. All right, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, if you haven't seen on Newsflash, the Emeryville Child Development Center moved over to the old Annie Yates School while we are replacing the roof at the ECDC facility. That move happened on Friday. School was closed today. It will reopen tomorrow. So the new location is 107041st. It's currently the German school. We're subleasing a portion of that. We hope to complete the project and hopefully a few other additional small renovations that we can afford at ECDC and move back by May. So again, the ECDC has moved to the old Annie Yates, 107041st Street.
I can verify the movement of tricycles occurred. I watched it from our Public Works Department today.
Well, I do want to thank our colleagues in the Public Works Department who helped out by receiving the movers' work and helping the teachers set things up. So it was a good team effort of everybody.
All right, ex parte communications. Go ahead.
On item 11.1 regarding the public market marketplace appeal, I've had conversations and email exchanges with both Mark Stefan from City Center Realty, as well as John Gooding on behalf of Wareham.
Nothing since the last meeting.
No.
No. Okay. I, too, have spoken with Mr. Gooding. I have, and that was fairly recent, so. All right.
I might have spoken with Mr. Gooding. I don't remember if it was before this meeting or not. I'm going to declare it just in case.
Just got that in under the wire. Public comment for consent items or items not on the agenda. I do have, that's for an item on the agenda, sorry. So anybody want to come up for public consent? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a member from, I have a member from the Vice Mayor, and a second from Member Medina.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. Got that wrong once, and it's going to stick that way forever. Okay, I opened the public hearing at 7:52 for the Marketplace Parcel B Appeal.
Good evening, Mayor Pats, council members. Happy New Year. I'm Miru Desai, Project Manager for this item. I will, we will begin the staff presentation with a note from the city attorney regarding the procedure that we will be following today.
Great.
Thank you, Miru. So, mayor and council, this is, once again, staff is recommending that you adopt a procedure for tonight's hearing. The proposed procedure from staff is on this slide with the applicant making the first presentation, followed by the appellant. You've already opened the public hearing, so you would be taking public comment at that point, and where it says "public hearing," and then the rebuttals would be in the order of the applicant and the appellant. Finally, we would recommend that you take deliberation and action tonight. We note that pursuant to our planning regulations, the council had 90 days from your November 5 hearing to take action on the appeal. That 90 days would expire on February 3. So this is your last regular meeting to be able to take the action that's required within the timeframe of your, of the ordinance. So if the council wishes to adopt this or another procedure, we ask that, we recommend that you take a, adopt a motion to adopt the procedures for tonight.
Okay. We still have a quorum, but Member Martinez has stepped out, but is everybody okay with this thing? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Bowders?
No.
Hold on one second.
It's a lot of time for this whole thing to be re-presented again, so I'm no on this time period. We don't need to hear them all do this whole thing all over again.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is a narrow scope of things to review that are based on the Planning Commission, so I'm, I wasn't, I've seen this today, but I'm no, but you may get a majority. I'm just don't like this.
Do you have a friendly amendment or a substitute motion?
I would limit it to, I don't think we need to hear rebuttals, and I'd give them 10 minutes each. I'll make a motion to give the applicant and the appellant 10 minutes each to eliminate rebuttals and to move that approval for that as, as the time period for this.
Sure. I'll happily second that.
Okay. Do you accept that amendment?
Oh, he.
No, I made a new, a substitute motion.
Okay, substitute motion, sorry.
I'm seconding his substitute.
Okay, so we'll take the vote on the substitute motion, which is, did you capture that? 10 minutes and no rebuttals?
Yes, I got that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, on the substitute motion, Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. So the substitute motion carries. We will not hear the original motion. And that brings us into the staff presentation.
All right, so a little bit of a background. We can't just jump right in the middle, but quick background so that people in the citizens also have a chance to review what is going on, on this project. So in August of 2008, the City Council approved the Marketplace PUD, PDP, and this approval laid out the site plan, the mix of uses, height, heights of individual buildings, and the general massing. So this is the approved PUD PDP. Just to get you guys oriented, on the top of the screen is the railroad, and this is the existing bridge on that. So the approved PUD conceived of realignment of Shellmount Street, construction of two new streets, and the new buildings would line along the railroad as well as along the surface parking lots here, as well as in the, on the former UA terrace site and the parking lot there. There used to be a couple of banned, one-story warehouses, office buildings, which were removed, and the current housing development exists. And this is the approved massing of the PUD PDP. Between February 2015 and June 2016, the Planning Commission approved the final development plans for the four new buildings, an expanded and a renovated park, and the realignment of Shellmount Street, as well as creation of 62nd and 63rd Streets. These are the various parcels. In terms of where they are at, it's easier to follow through a diagram. So what we have, the CCRP, the first thing, one of the first things they constructed was the Christie Park. There used to be an existing park, 0.8 acres, to which 0.5 acres were added. The park was redesigned and constructed, and it has been constructed for a couple of years now. The grocery parcel C1, what we needed, what was a grocery store, has been built, and what is under construction right now are the residential units wrapping around it. Parcel D, residential building again, and it's almost near completion. In terms of the parcel B chronology, an FTP for this project was approved in June of 2016, and at that time, it accommodated parking as well with the ground flow retail. The garage would provide parking for the existing commercial users at Marketplace that have been served by the previous surface parking lots, and, and that are being served by the existing parking lot, which is parcel A. The city centered then wished to modify the proposal for parcel B to accommodate office and lab space. And this was a 113-foot tall, eight-story building that included ground flow retail, four levels of structured parking, and about 150,000 square feet of office lab space on three levels. This was approved by the commission on January of last year. The approval was appealed by Wareham on February 8, 2019. At that time, the City Council remanded the appeal to the Planning Commission on March. The Planning Commission reviewed the appeal and unanimously reapproved the project in May. The City Council called the project for review a week later. Approval was appealed by Wareham as well for the second time subsequently. And then that appeal was held on October 1 by the council, and they set a hearing date for November 5. On October 31st, that is before the November 5 appeal hearing, the applicant submitted a proposed alternative, which we would call the project that is in front of you today. At the November 5 meeting, the council requested the commission to review the following issues and submit a supplemental report to the council. And this, the issues that needed, that the council gave direction for review is that the, that the commission should consider parcel B plans dated on October 31st as baseline document, require that the roof deck comply with the PUD condition of approval that requires the roof deck on the Shellmount building to be landscaped, require a condition of approval that the City Council review any final art for the exterior prior to the issuance of the building permit for the building, and that the commission, in course of the review, examine public access to the roof deck, and that the commission examine and make recommendations related to the trash enclosure with the view of internalizing it within the building structure. So the proposal in front of you is compared here to the appealed FTP. So in terms of mix of uses, the mix is the same. The square footage of retail and office remains the same. There is a small decline in the number of parking spaces. In terms of height, the height is increased to 180 feet tall now, is compared to 113 feet, with an 82-foot setback at the south end on the, on the sixth level. So in terms of total stories, the appealed FTP was eight stories with five levels of parking and three levels of office. And the proposal in front of you is nine stories with five levels of parking and four levels of office space. So this is the picture of the site. Obviously, the building is going to go right there in terms of the building pad. It's a little older picture. This kind of shows you the site within the Marketplace area. And this is the ground flow plan. So in terms of the way the building functions, it hasn't substantially changed from the appealed FTP. So you have ground flow retail, fronting Shellmount Street, with delivery and some parking and lifts at, behind. The entry to the building is at both ends, and I will show you a site circulation plan in a little bit. This is the parking level on the second floor, and these are parking levels from level three to five. Office levels then are on six to nine. As you will see, at this level is what are we calling, the roof deck or the terrace deck? This is the vehicle and bike circulation. So at the north end, there is both entry and exit by vehicles into the building, and from the south end, it's exit only. In terms of bike parking, you see short-term bike parking at these three locations, which are outside the building, and long-term bike parking, which are, which is inside the building. This is the servicing plan in terms of the deliveries. Majority of the deliveries will be occurring within the building, which is at the back of the first level. This is the trash enclosure plan. So essentially, the trash enclosures have always been inside the building. What is going to occur outside is simply the pickup and staging. So the trash will be brought outside during, on the pickup times of the week. So I think that was a little bit of a clarification that needed to be made the last time the council saw that. So this has not changed because the trash enclosures are inside the building. This is the Shellmount Street elevation. I'm not going to talk too, too much about the building materials and design, as I know that the applicant has a presentation and will be going into further detail, but the ground level is stone. The upper levels are, there's a glass curtain wall for the entry, and then you have the metal and, the glass, the metal and glass window system, as well as concrete being used as one of the materials. This is the railroad side elevation, and this is the north and south elevations. As has been discussed, discussed rather extensively, that public art is going to be used on both the east and west elevations. The dotted line, it basically shows where the, where the art will be placed. There is a master plan where artists have been shortlisted, and at the bottom, you see some of the works of the shortlisted artists. This is kind of the building section, kind of showing you clearly the retail at the ground level, then the levels of parking, and this is the roof for the terrace deck, and then with levels of office on top of that. So this is the appealed PAD on the top, and this is the proposal in front of you for the Shellmount side. So the main difference that you see is this, in the appealed FTP, you had a glass curtain entry into the building. Because of the setback, this has kind of realigned itself and precluded this glass curtain window throughout the height of the building. This is the parcel B in context of the surrounding Marketplace buildings, and this is how it looked in the appealed FTP design. In terms of conformity to the general plan and consistency with the approved PUD PDP, the general plan designation is mixed use with residential, and this allows residential office, retail uses, and associated parking. In terms of the total PUD PDP, the proposed building height of 120 is consistent with the approved PDP, and compared to the approved PDP, there will be about 90,000 square feet of less commercial space. These are kind of diagrams. From the top is the approved PUD PDP, which I had shown you in the beginning. This is, this one in the center is the appealed FTP, and this is the proposal in front of you. Similarly, these are diagrams showing on the top the approved PUD. The green outline is the outline of the now constructed Embry Station West. So the top is the approved PDP, in the between is the appealed PDP, and the bottom is what is in front of you. So in terms of environmental review, an EIR was done for this, and, which was applied to the FTP. Subsequently, an environmental checklist has been attached to all the staff reports of the appealed FTP, as well as this one, which confirms that there have been no substantial changes in the proposed project or to the circumstances, circumstances under which project will be undertaken, and that no new information of substantial importance exists, which would require preparation of a subsequent EIR. The staff report goes further into details of how the review, environmental review provisions have been met. In terms of city council direction and the Planning Commission's supplemental report to you, one of the things that the council directed was to add a new condition requiring review of public art by the council prior to the issuance of a building permit. The commission also recommends, so this has been included in the packet that you have, and the commission also recommended that the value of the artwork on east and west facades do not have to be the same. In terms of terrace roof deck, the council wanted the applicant to examine the public access to the terrace roof deck space. The applicant has not proposed this, citing privacy and cost of making the space accessible. The Planning Commission agreed with the applicant that the terrace need not be accessible to the public. In addition, there was a question regarding trash. The council directed that all enclosures be inside the building, and they are inside the building. In terms of Planning Commission action, the commission considered their project, the project in front of you, at the December meeting, and on a 5-0 vote, recommended the council approve the project, subject to the additional conditions noted earlier. So in order for the council to approve this proposal, it needs to make two findings. One, that this final development plan substantially conforms to the PDP, and that the changes and conditions of approval specified by the City Council in its approval of the PDP have been met. Staff believes that these two findings can be made, as extensively outlined in the staff report, as well as the resolution. So with that, the staff is recommending that the council approve the project, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report, and also rescind the FTP that was approved, and that's approved back in, that was approved, and rescind the FTP 15-011, which was just a parking structure with ground flow retail for parcel B. If there is another option for the council, the council could uphold the appeal and deny the project. If the council chooses to do so, then the council needs to provide direction to staff as to the findings for denials, which are blank in the attached resolution to your packet. as to the findings for denials, which are blank in the attached resolution to your packet. So that concludes my presentation. Before we move on to the applicant, I would like to direct your attention to a couple of things. One is that we received a letter from Wareham's attorney. I believe there should be a copy in front of you at the dais. Charlie Bryan will be addressing the comments made in that report. And the second thing that I would like to just mention is that in the plans that you have received, the first page, the date, that couple of typos, like the date on the first page is 2019, it should be really 2020, and so that will be corrected, that and a couple of other typos like that would be corrected. So that concludes my presentation, and I will be right here if you have questions after Charlie has walked through the letter that we received from Wareham.
So Mayor Patz and members of the city council, as Mira said, you should have a letter in front of you that was received yesterday from Wareham's council, Rutan and Tucker. This letter, I won't go over it in detail, but it is broken down into three sections, and I'd just like to briefly respond to each of those three sections. The first section relates to public art, and in the letter, they request that six additional bullet points be added to condition of approval 2B1 regarding public art. In staff's view, these do not substantively add to what we already have in either the conditions of approval or the resolutions. All of these points are already addressed. I would note regarding the budget for the public art, that is determined in accordance with the city's public art ordinance as a percentage of construction valuation, and whatever that ends up being will be what will be applied to the project, consistent with the public art master plan that they have prepared. Second is regarding community benefits. This section really is about public access to the roof deck, and they do make a comparison to the Emery Station West development across the tracks. I would note that this project, this PUD, was approved in 2008 before the city had a development bonus system that required the provision of community benefits. So the community benefits provisions really don't apply to this project. However, the Emery Station West project was approved after the community development, the development bonus system was adopted, and it did require the provision of community benefits because the building exceeded 100 feet in height. And in order to get that development bonus of exceeding 100 feet in height, one of the community benefits that was cited was the provision of that elevated roof deck. That same situation, as I said, does not apply to this project, and staff believes that there is no nexus for the city council to require public access to this roof deck. And the third set of comments relate to the conditions of approval. These are mostly corrections of typographical errors or clarifications. Staff agrees with all of these comments, and we have addressed all of them in a redlined version of the conditions of approval that are in front of you, and the changes are literally in red, so you should be able to find them fairly quickly. They're mostly non-substantive corrections. So with that, that concludes our response to this comment letter.
Great. Any clarifying questions? Seeing none, we'll go right into the applicant presentation. You'll have 10 minutes.
Good evening, city council members. I wanted to start off by stating that over the last year, we've listened to the city council's comments and concerns, we've listened to the appellant's concerns, and at considerable expense and time, we've made major adjustments to our plan to respond to those issues, and we think we've done that. As it relates to their comments about the art budget, I wanted to point out that right now, based on the costs of the various projects within the public market, it looks like we'll have somewhere around $2.85 million available for art. And right now, we're talking about allocating the budget as follows. Christie Park, $150,000. The Public Market Courtyard, which is in between the brick building and the Office Tower, $400,000. The Stairwell Plaza, which is the stairwell coming across the railroad tracks and then down on parcel A, would be $300,000. And then the Life Science Building we're talking about tonight, west side would be $1.5 million, and the east side would be $500,000. But I want to remind you also that the budget allocation is dependent upon the Arts Commission approval. So it's not in our hands. They approved that allocation. And then I'd like to quickly address the issue about public access on the roof deck. And Christopher will add more detail to this, but I am particularly concerned about the security. We all know we have certain security issues in this community, as well as all over. This roof green space is 60 feet up in the air, and I'm concerned they won't put eyes on it like other green spaces are, and so I'm concerned about that as a real security issue. And then lastly, the appellant brought up the question of, well, to do, to add this public access isn't significant. I wanted to point out that since the project was first approved about a year ago, we had pricing from our general contractor, and then we repriced it again. Those numbers actually came in Friday. And over that timeframe, those numbers have gone up about $20 million. Half of that is mostly due to price escalations over that time period, and we all know what's happened to the market. But then the other half is just changes made to accommodate that. That's fine, but we want, we'd like to be able to move forward the project and get it going, and then with the whole community benefit, if we could do so.
It's good to see you all again. I'm just going to get right to it. I think you know our team, our public art consultant is away, but we've already talked about that a little bit. Just to review some of the sort of major highlights and changes, the program is basically the same as we've seen for the last few months. We have a couple of summary pages in our submitted document, which compare our design from a year ago to our design from midsummer, late fall, to our design from now. And we've been responding to comments, a couple rounds of comments from you, and a couple rounds of comments from the planning commission, as well as comments from third parties, and we're trying to incorporate all of that. A few keys that were sort of outliers or outstanding. We talked about trash collection. The trash is stored inside, it's always been. Public art, as of our last hearing, we've agreed that you would be getting final approval on the public art. So that's done, I hope, for both sides. And then roof deck design, it was also suggested, actually when we were here last time, that we follow condition 3A, 3C, which talks about the design and landscaping of the roof deck. We thought that was a great idea, we're planning to do that. And then roof deck access is where it gets a little bit tricky. And this is where, you know, in addition to Mark's concerns about, you know, the added costs and the tricky feasibility of it, I think what we're really talking about is public space creation. And our thought, and I want to sort of echo what Charlie was saying, was that you have regulatory tools to make public open space. You've got the general plan, zoning, land use. You've got development bonuses, which is what the Wareham Terrace, what delivered that terrace. That wasn't sort of a good-natured thing, that was a development bonus that you gave him to do that. You also have development agreements, which, you know, was part of the PDP for this project. So the terrace that we're talking about, as we've moved the project closer and closer to the PDP, the terrace was always there. The terrace was in the original PDP, and at that time, it was not determined that it should be a public open space. You did determine, your predecessors, that Christie Park should be rebuilt and expanded. So that was the public open space commitment that everyone agreed to for the public market. The other kind of aspect to the roof deck access is whether or not this would really be a great public open space, and whether or not it's actually connected to your public space network in terms of the connected amenity network. And this space is kind of a dead end. Lots of the projects at the public market do have private or common shared open spaces that are not part of the public open space network. On the network is the Wareham Terrace, the Bridge Overpass, Christie Park. Those are all connected with nice sidewalks, tree-lined streets. This would be something of a dead end, and is not in that network. And in my opinion, this is what the planning commissioners really rested on. They thought it wouldn't be a great public space, it's not connected to any eating establishments, any other sort of public overview. That concludes my, I'm sort of available to address any of the other comments. I know that there was a question unresolved from the planning commission about whether or not we could move an elevator, kind of move one from one end of the building to the other to serve the roof deck. We would have to add an elevator, we sort of need the elevators where we are so far, so we would need to be adding one. And I'm sort of available to respond to any other questions.
Let's wait till the end.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chelsea McLean. I'm a partner at Holland and Knight, land use attorney for the applicant team. I wanted to respond to one other particular point in the appellant's letter sent yesterday, and this was about a request to require that the art is approved before the building permit application can be submitted. There are several steps to achieve approval of the art. There's going to be an amendment to the plan to reflect the increased budget, the Arts Commission will have to approve it, the planning director will have to approve the master art plan, there will have to be an RFP process for the public art, and then ultimately, it will come back to you all for approval of the art. And we don't want to hold up the building permit process for that, for those steps to occur. But of course, there is a current condition that requires the art to be approved before a building permit can be issued. So that's an appropriate safeguard to ensure that the art is approved before construction starts. We just don't think it needs to occur at the earlier milestone of submitting the application. I also wanted to note that with a couple minutes left, we do have our wind consultant here. He did an additional study of whether there are any wind impacts on the roof deck, and he concluded that there will be no wind hazard impacts on the roof deck. So I wanted to note that he's also available for questions, as am I.
I had one for, yeah, at the end, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Christopher, could I just bring you up to the mic? So my question is about the elevator. I agree and understand all the issues related to the PUD and the open space balancing thing. I guess my question is just, and this is in response to benefit of my colleagues, a question I submitted. I watched the planning commission hearing, and Commissioner Donaldson asked a question that came off as rhetorical, because no, nobody answered it, and the chair did not redirect it to the applicant. She asked in the design, and for my colleagues, if you look at the packet on page 15 of the plans, you'll see on that page, there are light blue spaces, and the far one to the left, that's the north side of the page, it contains a stairwell, it has a vestibule, and it has one elevator labeled Elevator 1 as a shared common elevator. And then in the middle, you'll see there are an additional set of elevators, 2, 3, and 4, that service the center of the building. And as you go south in the building, there's a vestibule with a staircase, another quarter of the way down the building, and at the end, there's a last one, and that's where, that's below this terrace area. And I think the thing I just am not satisfied with is the necessity for the elevator, you say you need it at the north end, I'm just wondering why they can't be, it can't be flopped with the staircase? Like what, what is the, I mean, that elevator doesn't really open up to anything except the middle of the sidewalk, whereas the other one would open up to a crosswalk, it would open up to the public market, it would be next to parcel A where the staircase to the tracks is. I'm just trying to make sense of why the elevator at the north end, why that part of the structure cannot be swapped with the stairwell at the south end, and that's what I'd like you to address.
That's a primary entry point for the parking area, so it needs to have the stair with the elevator at that location.
Okay, but it doesn't even open to the parking area. It's got green space, and it's walled off, and the doorway opens to Shellmount Street, so I'm trying to understand it.
It opens to the parking levels above, so if you were going to the public market or Christie Park, and you parked in the garage, you would walk back across 62nd, cross, and then go up through that core?
You'd go north, you'd go north to go back south?
Any of the parking levels? Pardon?
So you're saying that people, you think the migration of people is that they would walk up to that mid-block crossing where the parking garage entrance is, and then go back south? You don't think people are going to jaywalk at that intersection?
Well, we've been, you know, we've been designing Shellmount to slow down traffic, and although a great shopping street does encourage jaywalking, we weren't designing for jaywalking, but we do know that traffic will be slower, and we provided as many crosswalks as we could. We sort of worked with the whole team of both planning staff and planning commission to carefully locate where those crosswalks would be. They're all in place already.
Yeah, but that was at a time when the building was proposed to be what you originally proposed with the PDP and the original FTP. I mean, I was in the planning commission that fought to add the crosswalks at Christie at 63rd Street.
Yes.
And the raised crosswalks. So I'm very familiar with the crosswalk plan, but that was a different building. You're not proposing to change the tentative map and the crosswalks, so, but you're proposing to change the design of this building. So I'm just wondering if this still matches, in your opinion, this still matches that? The migration of people in this building, despite the design change, is going to be no different? Because there was talk about even having a cafe or a restaurant on that corner, that was going to have a patio, and there wasn't going to be anything there except a patio. So I'm trying to follow you, why you have to have this elevator there?
I think, I think that's the best location for it, based on all of the analysis that we've done. I think, you know, we haven't, this is not a final design.
Well, this is an FTP, so what is, what is this then?
Well, this is a, it's an FTP, but there are certainly, when, once we engage an entire engineering team, they'll help us figure out lots of the interior aspects of the building, like exactly how big that elevator is, exactly how we do the mechanical servicing. You know, the planning entitlement design is the initial step in a process that would follow months of detailed design down the road.
So they couldn't help you design an elevator at the south end in lieu of that one that would move people up and offer fobbed access to the building for tenants and offer public access to the sixth floor?
I think you could do that. What it would suggest is that you, I think you're saying you would go up and then cross?
Double-sided elevator, and then at the sixth floor, you could, it would only be open to public, but everything else would be a fob. This is what wasn't addressed at the meeting, so I'm trying to get.
So I'd like to address the council. If we were to swap out that elevator, and you can correct me if you feel otherwise, and we moved to the south, that would service just the parking levels, it would not service the life science space above. The central elevator core is what would service the life science space above.
Okay. So if you moved it to the south end, it wouldn't service the parking level, is that what you're saying?
No, I said if we moved it to the south, it would serve only the parking level.
Okay, whereas this north one serves the parking level and the building itself? Those are my questions.
Great. Other clarifying questions? Great. Okay, so, all right, the appellant, please.
Good evening, Mayor Patz, members of the council, Matt Francois, Rutan and Tucker. On behalf of the appellant, Wareham Development, and here with me tonight is Jeff Sears. I want to start off by thanking the applicant first for listening, as he said, and presenting the alternative plans to you that are before you for approval tonight. I want to thank the council for providing the direction to the applicant and to the entire staff as to what you'd like to see in terms of those alternative plans, and to staff for facilitating those changes through the resolution and proposed conditions of approval. Wareham is generally in support of the staff recommendation with a few changes to the conditions of approval, some of which staff has already indicated tonight, they're recommending that you make. Those were detailed in a letter to you that I sent yesterday. I won't belabor that letter because you have it before you, but I will just make one point. point, and that is, we do think it's important, not for, necessarily for this council, because you've made it clear what you'd like to see in the building, you heard the applicant testify as to the budget, you've seen the presentations that were presented by their art consultant, but a future body that might be called upon to act on that art plan may not have the benefit of the entire hearing that you just, of the hearings that you sat through on that. And so providing that detail in the condition, we think is important, and it's essentially replicating what was in the PDP conditions to be achieved through the architectural elements. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on our letter, and we'd respectfully ask for your consideration of the changes that we ask to be made, especially to condition 2B. Thank you.
Any clarifying questions?
Just what is 2B? You mean, condition 2B, under item 1? That's what you mean? You don't mean paragraph 2 of your letter?
Councilmember Bowders, condition 2B1 is...
Of the conditions themselves, not your letter.
That's right.
Ah. I'm looking at your letter.
Are you done with your presentation? You have time, so, okay. My question, I, I will ask two questions about your letter. The first is on item 1, which you just spoke to, condition 2B. I'm really confused of where you actually stand on this item, to be honest with you, because you came and asked that any art be approved by us, and you went to the Planning Commission, and originally, the conditions of approval said reviewed, and you said we want it to be approved, and when we gave that direction to, to do the supplemental report, and we said, we think it should all be approved by us, you said you'd be very happy with that. And you told the Planning Commission that, not you yourself, but you guys said the Planning Commission, yes, we think it should say approved. Now, we get this letter after the Planning Commission does that, that has this bulleted list of additional conditions. When does it stop? I mean, like, I feel like this is, this has become kind of outlandish to ask the applicant to make changes related to art that the council agreed with, as it, as it was when it came up on appeal, that we remanded, and now there's this new set of bullets, and I just, I, I, I'm kind of like, what, what is the point of this? So can you help me understand why you needed to now add all these details that weren't in any of the appeal, weren't raised at any of the prior meetings, and were not discussed when you came to the Planning Commission last month?
Certainly, I'll, I'll try to. I, I think where, where it all, I can tell there's deal fatigue on this project, probably from everyone, and I understand that and appreciate that. What we're trying to accomplish is not to have the applicant submit another set of plans, but really just to try to get clarity in the conditions of approval, so that whatever body is called upon to review the artwork has standards to measure it against. Right now, the condition simply says, this body approves it, and the east doesn't have to match the west. It's not a lot of guidance, so the, the suggestion would be, it doesn't, we're not wedded to these conditions, if you have ones that are better, or, I put on my best artist hat and tried to develop ones that not only seem to replicate what we're in condition, PDP condition 2E, that the architectural features were designed to break up the mass and the bulk of the building, so that it didn't appear like a box or a wall, especially from the railroad right-of-way. They're achieving that partly through architectural features, especially on the step-down on the south side. They're not stepping down on the north side, the art is essentially substituting for that. So what standards does that art have to meet, so that this building doesn't look like a box, and doesn't look like a wall from the railroad right-of-way? That, that's why we're presenting suggested standards that would be included in a condition that this body, or some future body, could measure the artwork against when it's being called to, to review and approve it.
Wareham has an employee on the Public Art Committee, is that correct?
It does.
Okay, so you have a voice in that process, do you not?
Yes.
Okay. No more questions.
Clarifying questions on the side? Yep. Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that opens up the public hearing. I did this incorrectly earlier, it's now 8:35, and I have one comment card, but if anybody else would like to speak, Mr. Singh, you're up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Pats, and members of the council. I just wanted to come back and, and, and say I'm in favor of this redevelopment project for Parcel B. Again, my name is Jonathan Singh, I, I'm a renter here in, in Emeryville, I live not far from the proposed project at 64th Street and, and Christie. To me, the, the primary reason why we ought to move forward with this project is for the replacement parking that the structure is going to provide that will allow us to, us to approve the, the housing project on Parcel A. I think it's, I think it's key that we, that we continue to, that we continue to redevelop the, the marketplace, and that we continue to provide more housing in Emeryville. Our, our city's done a lot for, for such a small, one and a half square mile city to provide more housing, but I think we, I think we can continue to do more, and, and lead by example here in, here in the East Bay. I wanted to make one point as well about, about the parking provided here in, in Parcel B. One thing I read, you know, with, with approval in the, in the current submission to the council is that parking has been reduced by about 10% from what was originally proposed. I think that's great, I think in the future, we can be even, even more brave and more bold in, in further reducing parking, in support of our, our city's goals to, to reduce vehicle miles driven, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and to further encourage walking, bicycling, and mass transit here in Emeryville. So again, I'd like to do, I'd like to ask you to, to please adopt this resolution and move forward with, with the Parcel B plans. Thanks.
Great. Anybody else, any other members of the public like to speak? I mean, come to the mic.
Again, I'll say, as I said before, everybody associated with this is despicable. Like, you got the Wareham Development Corporation, you know, despicable, then you got City Center Realty, despicable, and then you got the city of Emeryville, who's not looking out after the residents' interests. Everybody associated with this is bad. However, as I've, before I said, my sympathy sort of lies with the public marketplace because of the extra level of depravity of, of Wareham. Now, Wareham should have no credibility, should Brook no credibility with the five of you. All you have to do is just take a drive down, or a walk down, or a bike down Horton Street, and you'll see, like, it's a, basically a clusterfuck, and it's because of the Wareham didn't want to spend the money, cut into their profit margin, to accommodate vendors. And so we're stuck with forever for Wareham not wanting to spend the money to, to make it to the, you know, the street, the public street is usable to the public. He just, basically, he shat on us. He being Wareham, being Rich Robbins. Okay, but having said that, I, I just heard tonight something pretty outrageous, it was just said by Mark Stephan, or one of his proxies or whatever, and about how they should, we shouldn't have roof deck public accessibility because of the, they did Christie Park. Well, I just did a story on that on my blog, the Emeryville titleer. They add, the City Center Realty added, or where, Public Market added, the project added .46 acres to the park, and they're adding 640, 674 units, and that's going to be, come out to be about over 1,200 residents, and then, so you figure out residents per acre, and it's over 2,600 residents per acre. We're supposed to have, no, as I said before, we're supposed to have no more than three, three acres per thousand residents, so, I mean, the audacity for them to now say, don't make them have the public roof deck be accessible to the public, because they've already done more than their share with the Christie Park expansion, is ridiculous. So I say, no, make it, we should have, at least have access to the roof deck, and, and if they had kept their mouth shut about Christie Park, I wouldn't be saying this, but that, that's, we got screwed on Christie Park, I mean, royally screwed. 2,600 residents per acre is absurd, so you should force them to make it so that the public can at least access that roof deck. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Okay, council deliberation is what's... Oh, sorry, close the public hearing.
Mayor Pats?
Yes.
May I just say, make one clarifying comment?
Please.
I've heard talk about the Public Art Committee this evening, and normally, the Public Art Committee does not have jurisdiction over private public art, right, privately provided public art. In this particular case, the development agreement calls for the Public Art Committee to review the Public Art Master Plan on three occasions. They have done so, and they have made their recommendation on the Public Art Master Plan. The project is not due to go back to the Public Art Committee after that.
Thank you. Okay, council deliberation. Member Donahue?
I think that their analysis of, would that roof deck be used is correct, it would not be really used by the public. Be nice to look up and see some green from the streets and, from, across the tracks, but I, I don't feel the necessity to have that as a public space. I think, you know, specifying a budget for the artwork for the building, east and west, I think you ought to think about it first, what is the experience of the viewers to the art? I think that viewing, looking west from waiting for a train, or looking from across the tracks is an inherently different experience than looking to the east from a crowded street with trees on it. So I just think that you have to think about the art differently, you think about what is going to work in each location, then allocate your budget for how it works best. So I think that they're, you know, pre, pre-assigning a budget, maybe not a great idea, but trying to get the artwork to function really for how it's going to be seen, is what you should think about first, and then figuring out how to get the economics to work. I'm basically satisfied with the project as it's come to right now, and, so I'm pleased to have this go forward.
You. Other deliberation?
I, I want to thank the applicant for going through this process. I think that we have gone over this project going back and forth at length, and I think that if we do not move forward with it tonight, we are holding up economic development in the city and harming small businesses and the public market. So I am looking forward to moving this along.
You're up.
Okay, it's because you forgot my name again?
Yes, Member Medina, I forgot your name again. If it would turn the name text to face me, it'd be much easier.
I'll work on it. You know, I largely agree with my, my fellow council members up here. I think that I really prefer the new design to what we, this new baseline, has substantive improvements in it. I feel satisfied with the approval for the art, good thing we have an artist up here to help us out with that. I think the trash enclosure design was pretty well settled with this diagram. Would I like the roof deck to have public access? Yes. Do I sort of agree, we have another second-story public access space in Emeryville that doesn't get much use? Frankly, even in San Francisco, where all major roof decks are required to be open to the public for buildings over a certain size, very few of them are actually popularly used, even though the financial district, which has extremely limited public space, and I used to make a habit of trying to go find them, and they were very rarely used. So I, I'm, I'm pretty satisfied with how far this has come. I'd love to find a way to make that a public space, but other than that, I'm, I'm really happy with how much this has progressed, and with the reduction of parking volume. I appreciate that particularly.
Great, thank you. Member Bowders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of the remaining items the appellant has raised, I don't agree with the request for the public art. On the community benefits and on the public access to the roof, while I think it should have been probably looked at earlier, I, I look at the totality of this, and I think it's consistent with the other projects in the PDP, that there is private open space. Not my preference, but it is consistent with the rest of the PDP, and I also agree with Member Donahue, that I, I don't know that there would be a lot of public use of it, which is sad but true, so I'm, I'm not willing to make that requirement tonight. And on the other comments, I just wanted to follow up, Charlie had mentioned all these items were addressed. I was looking through the conditions of approval, and the second condition that was requested about valet, there's actually a need to add language to that, and I'll let Charlie maybe just address that briefly.
Sure, that was an oversight, that was supposed to have been included in your redline version, but we just neglected to put it in. This is condition numbers, let's see...
63.
63, thank you, on page 16 of the conditions of approval. It says, valet parking, any use of the public right-of-way for valet parking shall be subject to all applicable city approvals, including but not limited to a review by the BPAC and the Transportation Committee. And what we would add to that is, and the city council. I think the appellant was probably not aware that Transportation Committee actions come to the city council ultimately for approval, but that's not really explicit in this condition, so we felt that just adding "and" the city council for clarification would be useful.
Those are my comments.
Great, thank you. You know, I think, I think last time we were here, I was ready for this project to move forward, I don't have much to add, other than it's my pleasure having you despicable people in our town, and I appreciate the work that you do. I think it's cooler, I was the mayor of Emeryville when this meeting started, I'm going to end as the despicable mayor of Emeryville, I kind of like that, I'm going to lean into that. That said, we are a Pixar town, so we are the by and large people, not despicable people, I'll throw that out there. Do I have a motion for approval on one of these two resolutions?
Oh, there's, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the resolution as amended by staff, with the, with the conditions of approval as amended by staff, by adding to condition of approval number Roman numeral 6, capital letter C, number 3, at the end, I'd remove the word "and" before the Transportation Committee, I'd place a comma, and after the words "Transportation Committee," I would insert the words, comma, "and the city council," period. And that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Member Bowders with those changes, and a second by Vice Mayor Martinez. Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Thank you, yes.
Can we throw away the binders now?
And with that, we move on to action items. We have no action items this evening. Department head reports, are there any department head reports?
Mayor Pats and members of the council, I would just like to announce one thing, which is, the Economic Development and Housing Division, and specifically, our housing coordinator, Valerie Bernardo, will be sponsoring a workshop on tenant and landlord just cause eviction, and that will be held on Wednesday, January 29th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at ECCL, and Echo Fair Housing people will be there to answer people's questions.
Excellent.
Do you have a link to that or something you can send us, so we can help publicize?
It's emeryville.org, and it's on the homepage, what's it called, the...
Newsflash.
Breaking news, Newsflash, yeah.
Breaking news, thank you.
Okay, any other department head reports? Seeing none?
How about a department head report?
No public works?
Just a reminder that pile driving will be starting very soon for the bridge, so it's a good thing.
Okay. That brings us to future agenda item requests from council members. I'll go to my right. Nothing, nothing, my left, Mayor, Member Bowders?
I, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that for the next meeting, and I think we can do it on short notice, that the council consider a resolution in support of a bus only lane on the Bay Bridge.
Oh, yeah. Go on, support.
And I think we can, we can mock that... And I think we can, we can mock that off of, other jurisdictions have begun doing them, it's not something we have to invent on our own, but I think that the city of Emeryville, in light of our relationship with AC Transit and the Alameda County Transportation Commission, we should, we should do that.
Okay, anything else? I think you got brought to court for that.
So that's the agenda that publishes on Friday, that's what you want on that agenda?
Yes, please. Love you, Sherry. It's been a while since we did one of those.
Okay, any other thing, any other future agenda items? Okay, I've got 8:50, and we are adjourned.